Call us to order.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
I don't have anything to say except for hello. Hello, everybody. And today we have a special guest, Renee Sessler from the Oregon School Board Association. She's in the Board Development Department. And she's here to tell us about board work.
Yeah, thank you for the invitation. It's my fifth year, for those of you who don't know. I've been coming out here in August, five years in a row. It's always fun, and I usually get invited in May, like I did this year, before we knew what your life was gonna be like. In June, and July, and August. So that was why I reached out to Jonathan after, you know, you guys had so many million meetings around hiring an interim superintendent, well, first appointing Dan as your acting, you know, and then to go through the process. And so I reached out to Jonathan and I said, "Are you guys still up for two nights in a row? You guys have been meeting an awful lot lately."
Yeah.
Yeah, so he said, "You guys talked about it, and you want to postpone the one that was scheduled for tomorrow night."
Right.
So, yeah, yeah. So anyway, we're here basically to start kind of at the beginning. It might seem I'll repeat a little bit to Jennifer and Shelley, but I have found that even board members who've been serving on boards 15, 20 years can learn something out of this. It's a lot to take in, in a three-hour period, and so, you know, your brain just can't comprehend it all, and when you see it a second time or a third time, you're like, "Oh, yeah," and starts to connect. So I apologize for the repetitiveness, for which you already know, but I hope that you two will find it very enlightening. I like to kind of start out by talking, getting acquainted a little bit with each other. And Jennifer squeaks, I'm gonna kind of sit sideways if it's okay. I guess it doesn't matter, it just squeaks. Try not to lean over the table. Anyway, just kind of give you a little introduction of who I am, in addition to what Jennifer shared, just to kind of tell you why I have any credibility to stand in front of you at all and talk about board work. So I am a mother of two daughters, both in their 30s, and when they were in preschool, they were in these cooperative preschools, and I ended up getting on the Board of Directors there. When they moved on to elementary school, I was one of those moms that volunteered. I was always in the school, and everybody kept saying, "Oh, you should get on the school board." And I'm like, "No, no, no, that's a four-year commitment." I applaud you for being willing to make that, because at that time in my life, I thought, "I can't commit to anything for four years. I have no idea what my life is gonna be like in four years. That seems like a huge, huge commitment." And I saw an article in the newspaper that somebody had moved out of our district, and there was a one-year vacancy on the board. I thought, "I could try this for a year, I could see what this is like." So I applied, there was two of us that applied, and we got interviewed by the board. There was a seven-member board like yourselves, and there was four board members present that night, two vacancies, so there could have really only been five that had showed up. So one was absent, and there were two vacancies. And so they vote, after the interview, I hung around to see what the board were gonna do, how they're gonna decide, you know? So three of them voted for me, and one didn't. So they held a second vote, and then the guy changed his mind, and all four of them voted for me. So I was sworn in that night, and that one year turned into nine and a half years. And the only reason I resigned was because I took a job for the Idaho School Boards Association, and so that meant moving to Boise. And this Oregon residency requirement for school boards just really got in the way. Getting back for four meetings a month was really prohibitive. So I moved to go to work for the School Boards Association in Idaho, created for the first time ever a full-time board training position. And they didn't have that, they're a really tiny shop, they're still really tiny. They got like six, seven staff members in the whole association. Oregon, by contrast, has about 40. And so anyway, I went over there, and I learned how to train boards in Idaho. And I worked in that state from 2004 through 2008, when the recession hit. And then I started knocking on OSBA's door and reminding them how they knew me, and that they wanted to hire me. They wanted to do this thing called the Lighthouse Project. They knew they wanted to do this thing called the Lighthouse Project, so they hired me. So I've been working for OSBA since 2009. And primarily, I just started out with them doing the lighthouse work, and then it's grown into doing everything in the Board Development Department.
Can you tell us about, just a summary about the Lighthouse Project?
Yeah, and we'll definitely get into that as we get into the slides, because it's part of this, because it's now, the lighthouse work is now the foundation of all of OSBA's board development. And I, you know, kind of take a lot of credit for that. That, and because my boss, Steve Kelly, was one of the first superintendents to ever learn lighthouse in Oregon. So, and it helped that he then learned it, and then put it into practice, and then moved to OSBA several years later. So that was really helpful. But, so definitely we'll cover that. And so I was a board member 1995 to 2004, and then I've been training boards in some capacity 2004 to today, so 15 and nine, so I've been at this 24, almost 25 years. So that's what qualifies me to have any idea of about board work, to talk to you guys. So I know that you know each other, I know you've been working with each other a lot, but could you tell me just a little bit about yourselves? And when you do that, is there anything about board work that you find particularly rewarding, satisfactory, exciting? A positive aspect of board work, or something that you're anticipating, if you haven't experienced it yet so far? And if there's anything about board work that kind of gives you, I'm not so sure, kind of a pause, a kind of like, "Yeah, and I didn't really sign up for that," kind of a feeling of what you know or think you might encounter when it comes to board work? So whoever wants to go first, you don't have to go in a line, but...
I can start.
Sure, thank you.
My name's Lori McLaughlin. I was sworn in July 1st, like I can. And I do, I teach art courses about it at Shenandoah Community College.
Very cool.
And I got involved in the board because I wanted to see the arts supported and continued. What I enjoy most is talking to others on the board, listening to their perspective. And it is a really nice board in that we enjoy listening to how each other thinks. And so I deeply appreciate that. And what, I'm so new that I don't know what to expect with this thing. But so far, it's been very positive and very rewarding.
Fantastic. Thank you, thanks for starting us off. Who wants to go next?
I'll go.
Okay.
So I'm Janet Alec. I served on the Community Roots, I think you presented there too, 2012 to 2014. I was on the Community Roots Board. I actually serve a board, I'm a director of a nonprofit association, so all my bosses are board members. So that's sort of the other side of the table for me. And the work that I particularly love to do is strategic planning. And so I look forward to, you know, in some way, being able to participate in some of that at the board level. And then in terms of what kind of makes me go, "Ugh," is, and where I feel like I need more education, is around sort of the protocols and rules of communication, of sharing information, of who you go through to get, you know, just the proper channel, all of those things that can get sticky
Sure.
when times are difficult. And so making sure that we're always staying on the right side of ethical issues, procedures, and doing the right thing, so that you can never be called out on those, you know, because you have enough to deal with with just making difficult decisions. You don't need to deal with, you know, people thinking that there's impropriety or that things aren't being done properly. So that's what I would really like to get some clarity on.
And we'll definitely talk about some of those tonight, for sure, absolutely sure. I don't know if we'll get 100% of what all your questions are covered tonight, because we only have three hours, but we'll definitely cover some of the pretty basic ones that should hopefully allow you a measure of success. Yeah, thanks for sharing.
I love what Janet said. I also am a fan of strategic plan. I work in a district that, when I very first started working there in 1997, the strategic plan was brand spanking new, right? And I've seen it evolve into a really useful document, a document that I look at all the time as a teacher. And so I agree that strategic planning is important. It's not what the public wants to hear about necessarily, right? Because the public doesn't, they don't get it necessarily, right? But it is something that really moves things forward, I believe. And so that's a gratifying part, is moving things forward and envisioning how that will help students. So I like that. And I would also say that as a board member, I like to talk about students and talk about the things that are gonna help students, less about the...
Processes and procedures.
Yeah, getting in trouble about that.
Right, right, right.
Right? Like, I wanna see less of that, and more talking about kids and what we can do to help make more opportunities for kids. So that's where I'm at.
I'm with that. And I think after being on the board for two years, I'm ready to really focus on how we can support our superintendent and how he can do his job the best that he can. And focus more on, you know, the curriculum and students, and how we can get money and programs. And I'm just, yeah, I'm so ready for that. And yeah, I think that's it for me.
Awesome. Thank you, I really appreciate it. This side of the table, anything you'd like to share about your jobs? What excites you about your jobs? Anything gives you pause? You can take a pass if you'd like, since you're not on the board, but... Is there anything you'd like to share?
I'll just share, I'm glad that I only have one job right now, so... You know, I've met, I think with everybody almost individually now, to talk about, you know, I, it's kind of a unique role. I think there's an aspect of my job to serve the board. I look at it that way, in terms of serving you to help you understand, you know, kind of what we do and be a sense maker. But then there's also a serving side of it that's, you know, that as elected officials, you know, what would you like to see in your schools? And so then how do I also then carry that out? So there's kind of this vertical thing that goes back and forth in terms of how I bring stuff to you so that you understand what happens in schools, and then, you know, what priorities does the board have that is then carried down to schools, so...
I guess the part that excites me is the opportunity to really make a difference in the lives of 4,000 kids. And it's hard to really keep our focus on the right things because there are so many things distracting us for really that important work. And all of those things deserve attention. So I guess that's the part that gives me a pause is I want the board's help and the help of all our administrative team on really keeping this focused on kids and learning.
Yeah. Yeah, I call that the tyranny of the urgent. It sometimes causes us to forget what's really important. You know, because it raises its big, ugly eye. Pay attention to me! Yeah. Anything, Debbie?
I love supporting both sides. I love learning all of the procedures, too. It helps me support both in an appropriate way, so, yeah. I'm always learning.
Very good. Thank you for sharing, Debbie, I appreciate it. So this, I don't know how much of that, you want to look at the screen or whatnot, but this is in part what I put together way back when, in May, when I was originally asked to come in anticipation of having some new members on the board and some members who hadn't served for very long, to just kind of revisit our Basic Roles and Responsibilities workshop, and talking about those best practice roles of boardsmanship, and that's where we're gonna get into the lighthouse information. Just a little more clarification on, you know, the differences between governance and management, considering OSBA is moving to a collaborative governance model and practice. What does that mean then, to have some differences between governance and management? And talk about the individual board member. You know, as an individual, if I want something, how do I do it? And who do I talk to? And some of the questions that you had, Janet. And then Paul and I talked very briefly on Thursday about a board superintendent operating agreement. OSBA has a new model I'd like you guys to consider. I know you've had one. I have worked with the one that has existed in Silver Falls for several years now. For the last five years, I've been working with the board, and we revise it every year. I'd like you to consider what we have, and then you guys decide what's gonna serve you best. And then if we have time, but there's an awful lot here, to talk about superintendent evaluation process and what you want to do with all of that. So that's what I had planned, but I know, just like Janet walked in with some questions about, you know, protocols and how do I do things appropriately, I know that there's some things that you guys are, in addition, really hoping to learn, and I want to jot those down. I'm gonna go get my pad of paper and bring it over here. And here from you, at this point, what I do is I just make a list of the things that you're hoping to learn tonight, so that I can make sure I address those. And if we don't have enough time, well then, I'm coming back, right? We just don't know right now, know the date of that.
Renee, would you like, or we can erase that, what's on that erase board is not...
Uh, doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
This is a little bit dirty from the wheels of my bag rolling on the back of the car, but...
Do you have a preference?
No, this is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, this is okay, and then... So you want to know about protocols? For communication? Requesting information? And what else, Janet?
I think protocols for communication probably captures it, but it would be sort of in all directions. So board members talking to teachers, board members talking to each other, board members talking to administrators, you know, what are just some of the things to be aware of in terms of where your, where some of your healthy boundaries might be, without stifling good discourse, which I think is really important.
I'd love to talk to you about that. Okay? I don't answer them now, I'm just listening.
Sure.
What else is out there?
I think we, it had shown up on our radar some more information about a journey to executive session, but I think we've got, I think we've had a little bit more clarity around that because we've had to do it much more frequently recently.
Yeah, right.
And so, you know, it might be worth blitzing through that if we have some time. I don't know what you guys think, or...
Well, I think it would be just a refresher course, yeah. We haven't had to go into so many executive sessions before June. So we've had to occasionally, but since June, we've had to have special meetings and such. And so I think it would be a good idea just to make sure we know the specifics.
Sure.
Dive into that and dissect it a little more.
You bet.
And statutes and such, so, yeah.
I could see your...
Potentially, a question would be whether there are distinct distinctions to be made between work sessions and regular board meetings, and what your recommendations might be for what happens where, is that maybe you had some thought...
How about, can I identify that as kinds of meetings?
Sure.
Okay.
And then I have one more, sorry, I'm getting...
No, no, feel free.
It's...
We are getting ready to talk about this, and so if you have any input to provide about the appropriate or really effective board role in collective bargaining?
No, and you can get...
Wonderful.
We have it here.
Yeah, might as well.
And you don't get to do that, that's fine, I'm just putting that...
Well, it could be good for, you know, any of these, it could be good for next time, yeah. We just prioritize, okay?
You know, I guess I have, I want to throw one out there. What is considered, you know, public information? And should school board members have like a separate phone for doing their work? Or just say, "Forget it." You know, whatever comes up, you know, is on that one cellphone, because...
And the reason you're concerned about that is because of public records.
Yeah, what constitutes that and how? Because I think most of us think, "Well, you know, here I am at work, so I'm now this person, I'm wearing a hat, now I'm gonna take my hat off as I get into the car and drive home." But with being a school board member, isn't just 24/7? So I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's why I'm here. And I'll do my best to address each one of these things tonight. Any other questions, just ask in the moment, as they come up. And if we don't get to all of these, then we will address some of them when we come back. Oh, Paul, yeah, anything from you?
Rules of procedure, Robert's rules, or...
Ah, some Harley Pro?
Yeah. And if we don't go too far into a refresher, where might we turn for that?
I was sitting here the last part.
If we don't go too far into a refresher of some of the, where do we go to get that guy?
Ah, okay.
I know the perfect place. Where I go. It's called Jurassic Parliament.
I've heard some of that.
She is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Her name is Anne McFarlane, I love her, she's great, I have her on speed dial. Actually, just email speed dial. But she's pretty responsive. She's good people. She's, I just up in Seattle area too, or Olympia area.
Oh, that's great.
You can assign it for her...
Webinar?
Yeah, well, and she sent out messages, little reminders, they're very good, very good.
Yeah, she gave the one today about grace in board meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have to assign it.
I'll send y'all the link, it's just great.
She's awesome, she's just awesome. So we have this little quiz that asks you, "Who's responsible for this work? Is it the board that's responsible for this work? Or is it the superintendent that's responsible for this work?" So I'd like you to just take a minute, write either a B if it's the board, or an S if it's the superintendent. I'm gonna make you choose one. People want to say both, they'll do like a B slash S. And I am going, please take one, I am going to make you stick to your answer, or choose an answer. And then when we talk about it, you'll hold up these little cards to answer. You'll say, "I said S," or "I said Ford," when the time comes to answer it. Would you like to see the quiz?
Great, thanks.
Sure.
You got the football coach one.
Okay.
Wow, I have a lens on my answers.
S, yeah, 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 especially the last one, nobody wants to do that, don't you? Are you kidding?
I don't even know the answer to that.
Yeah, that last one, it provides lots of laughter. We just answer it now.
No, 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 why can't I answer that one?
I'm surprised how it came out.
I forgot to mention this. This is a feedback sheet to help, OSBA to help me improve. And so throughout the evening, go ahead and jot down on it in real time as you see something and was like, "Aha!" Or how I can do something better, if you'd be so kind, is to give us that feedback. We really appreciate it. We used to do online surveys, and nobody ever wanted to take the time to fill those out after the fact. Then they really didn't help us all that much, so... And feel free to write on the back to help me get better. I can't get better without feedback, so I appreciate it. So I'm not gonna answer your questions right now, sorry. We'll get to the quiz in a little bit. But, and if you want to change your answers throughout this next part of the presentation, go ahead and feel free. I have yet to see anybody get 100%. So we'll see, maybe I'll see it tonight. But I really want to kind of start first at the big picture before we get really granular into the nitty-gritty about these little kinds of things that happen inside of a school system. So I'd kind of just like to start with the big picture and talk about why your behavior is so important, because how you behave as a board impacts the entire organization. And so boards that have a lot of infighting with one another, and the board members can't, you know, can't agree, and the meetings go on till midnight, it really has a negative impact on the system. So OSBA really wants you guys to be effective. Nobody wants to come to a board meeting where they're totally frustrated. So if we can all get on the same page about what's board work, what's not board work, it certainly helps to minimize some of that angst that happens. And in addition, we want you to do well because somebody is always watching. And especially in your district where you televise everything. So somebody is always watching. And you don't know when they're turning into the TV program, and how much context they've had to something that you guys have been discussing. You know, they might have missed all of the lead-up, hear this little bit of conversation, maybe not stick around for the resolve, you know, on the other end, and then they have an informed opinion about the Silver Falls School Board and the Silver Falls School District, because you can't control for that. And when they're physically here and in your room, then you know how long they've been paying attention, how much they're actually paying attention. You don't know, but you know that they're here, and they're watching, and they're listening to the whole context of the conversation. So you have to really be especially careful in your board work when you televise them like this. Everybody thinks they want transparency, okay, but public meeting law already provided for that, so... So here we're gonna get to talking about the Lighthouse Project, and Jennifer wanted me to dig into a little bit. There's really not a whole lot on these slides necessarily, they're just kind of a guide, but... The Lighthouse Project was transformational to school board work. And it was a research project that was begun by a woman in Iowa who had been a teacher, and then a school administrator, had gotten on a school board in another district, you know, like you got on a school board in another district, and decided to go for her PhD. And her research question was, "Are school boards in districts where they pretty consistently have high student achievement, and they keep it high, and they're continuously improving their student achievement, are those school boards any different than school boards in life-size districts? A lot of the demographics being very similar, yet their student achievement is kind of stuck, kind of plateaued, and they might have little ups and downs, but they aren't continuously going up." And so her research question was to ask, "Are they different?" And she, and this was in 1998, so this was all before No Child Left Behind. There wasn't much research on school boards up to that point, just a little spattering of information on school boards. And so she found out that yes, there was noticeable differences between these boards. And they fell in two areas. And they fell in two areas. The beliefs held by the board members and people who worked inside the system about students' abilities to learn and the system's ability to bring about that learning. So the beliefs was one area. The other area of difference was that the board was, the board in the high achieving districts, or boards in the high achieving districts were knowledgeable about what the district was actually doing and undertaking to improve student learning outcomes. Any special initiatives that the district had agreed to adopt, like a few years ago, it was all the, uh, something, response to intervention, you know, a few years ago was all the big thing. And they were knowledgeable about what that was, and how it was intended to work, and how the district was supporting staff around that, so they could be successful with the initiatives. In the districts where the boards tended to be stuck, or the student achievement tended to be stuck, the board members didn't have very high elevating beliefs about kids. They would say things like, well, you know, the kids we have, what can you expect? Didn't have a lot of belief in their staff's ability to really bring about positive change. And so, and those were expressed, those are actually said, we have quotes of some of these statements that were made. And then when it came to what the district was doing in their, in their business of educating children, they couldn't really speak with any specificity, they lacked a lot of knowledge of what the district was doing to improve student achievement. So armed with that information, this researcher who was getting her PhD went to work for the, while she was working at the time, at the same time, the, she left school administration, was working for the Iowa School Boards Association. And so she, her second research project that she was involved in then was, so can we took what we learned about these differences, can we help boards gain these differences? And would we see a change in achievement, you know, at the same time? And yet, at the same time, we're not really sure what to teach the boards. Or not even really sure what the board's role really is in improving student learning outcomes. So that project was undertaken in 2002 to 2007. I got involved in 2004 when I was representing Idaho. And a whole bunch of states were knocking on Iowa's door saying, what are you doing? What are you doing? Our school boards care about student achievement, they wanna make a difference. They don't wanna just deal with books and buses and budgets and bell schedules. You know, they wanna, they really wanna make a difference. And what are you doing? So we've actually formed a third research study that never got a hundred percent finalized and there was no results published for this third research project. But I undertook the, initiated the research in Idaho. A guy named Greg McKenzie initiated, you know him, he smiled. Greg McKenzie initiated it for Oregon. But Greg didn't use the Lighthouse curriculum. Greg created an auxiliary set of curriculum and was using the Lighthouse measurement tools, where Idaho was using the Lighthouse curriculum as they were figuring it out. They were like building the airplane while they were flying the airplane in Iowa, 2002 to 2007, and we were showing up at 2004. Greg and I started training boards in our stuff around 2007. That's when we started working his and his curriculum, mine and the Iowa curriculum. And then Greg left OSBA and went independent, so then they were just left hanging without any project, and I moved back to Oregon. So I switched them over to using the Iowa curriculum in Oregon. And one of the things that was discovered was that boards have these five distinct roles that really play into their leadership role. They're really, they're high level, we can get down into the details of how those work out. But to introduce them to you, they're pretty high level board roles. And that first one is making sure that as a board, you set really clear expectations, what you want the system to result in. So Steve, my boss, tends to use a language called setting that strategic direction. Where do we, it's in your book, sorry, you guys want notes? It is on page one. Well, there's a table of contents, and it's on page one, if you want to follow along. But, so when I was doing the Lighthouse work, it was like, as a board, you would study the current conditions in your district. You would get familiar with what's the current level of student learning in your district? What's the current situations, like you kinda laugh with a strategic plan. It'd be like doing all of that groundwork for a strategic plan. And then as a board, you'd say, this is the direction we wanna go in, this is our vision for the future, this is what we want to see happen inside a Silver Falls School District and for our kids. You know, this is a result that we want for them. And so you have to get really, really clear, and that's the first, the first role that they learned is that they surveyed these boards in Iowa that agreed to participate in this second study. They surveyed them and they asked the staff, and they asked everybody, what are the goals for the district? And they got a million different responses of what the goals for the district were. Oh, it's behavior, oh, it's graduation, oh, it's test scores, oh, it's this, oh, it's that. And then they started training and working with the board, and the board set some really clear goals and what they wanted the district to result in, and then three years, so they did it in year one, right at the beginning, a baseline, they skipped year two, and then they did it again in year three. It was reading comprehension, reading comprehension, reading comprehension, reading comprehension. They got really clear. And all of the staff knew what they were working on was to improve reading comprehension, because that's what their data showed them was where they needed to focus their limited amount of time and resources. And how they did that is that they spent a lot of time learning together as a board superintendent team. So they, they looked at the data, you know, what is our data telling us? They looked at the conditions. The state of Oregon's kinda helping us along this process just a little bit with, currently for us right now, with the passage of the Students' Success Act, because it requires a needs assessment. And that sure, that's looking at all of this stuff, and that's taking in input from the community. But the board should be, have a role to play in understanding what's being found out. And so you do that by learning together as a team. And you also then, in learning about what the needs assessments are, so that you can set that direction, at the same time, you're learning so you can do the rest of these other roles as well, which is what we call creating the conditions for success. And those are things like ensuring your budget contains, or you can identify inside your budget where it's developed, how it's gonna meet your priorities. You wanna give him a book?
Yes. Here, you might as well be able to have access to it.
Sure, yeah, that's fine. I just didn't think about it, my apologies, I'm sorry. But, so things like the budget, which is your responsibility, things like the use of time, which you're, you know, the board has to vote on, when's school starting, when's it ending, you know, what's the start time, are we starting at 7:30, are we starting at 9:30? You know, those kinds of things, it's board's responsibilities. And then your staff, and the supports that your staff need that are decisions that only you can make, like your collective bargaining agreement. So let's switch a little bit and talk about this piece as one of these conditions since it was asked. And talk about that condition for success and sidetrack this a little bit away from the other roles of the, of the board here. See, I was prepared, Paul gave me a heads up. I have board's role in labor negotiations on the slide. See, he's fulfilling your wishes already. So, oops, oh, I was just gonna talk to it, that's right, I wasn't, I didn't have any more slides. So basically, in the board's role in collective bargaining, you have some decisions that you have to make that start way ahead of when the actual sit down across the table from each other to bargain. And please forgive me if I get too elementary. But one of the first things that you would want to do is that you would want to have your current contract for whichever bargaining group you're bargaining with, classified, certified, you would want to have it reviewed. Things change since the last time that you bargained, sometimes laws change. And so you would want somebody to review it and give you feedback on suggestions of what you might want to put forward to bargain. You know, what pieces of the contract that they think would be beneficial, served the district well, to look at elements, whatever. So they would, so they would give you that feedback.
And let's make it specific of who that is.
So who is the best person?
Who is the best person?
Well, I'm always biased, okay? I'm gonna say OSBA. I'm gonna say OSBA's Labor Department.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'm biased a little bit. But we tend to be one of those organizations that train people because we can't pay them all that much and then we go somewhere else to make a lot of money. But, but we're really good at this, and we have a bunch of lawyers.
I remember a law firms also can provide that service too. Because they're also working with other districts who are bargaining, and they're seeing kind of what's, what are the issues coming forward, what are the issues that have been problematic?
Exactly. It's basically to give you a heads up, you know, like, you know, what they're seeing, you know, pay equity issues, do you have pay equities, have you addressed that yet or not? Family leave, early retirement, whatever kinds of things might be in your contracts that you would want to have reviewed. So that would be one of the first things that you would want to do. And then you have to, and then you, how you do this work is in executive session. You have, the executive session is one of the areas where you can have, or collective bargaining, I meant to say, is one of the areas where you can talk in executive session because you don't have to show your hand. And you do this, so that's where it happens. Most of this work is where it happens. I mean, you can request the contract be reviewed in, well, you would have to make a decision in regular open session. Can't decide in executive. So you do that, then you have to identify who's gonna be your spokesperson. So who's gonna, who's gonna represent the board or represent management at the table? You know, who is that going to be? Again, I'm biased, OSBA's got bargainers that work on behalf of school boards all over the state. But, so too do a lot of law firms. So too, sometimes it's your HR director that sits down at the table and bargains on your behalf. I mean, you just, you need to determine who that person's going to be. You need to determine who's gonna be on your team. So who's making up the team? Will any board members participate in that team? Some like to do that, some don't. If you do, your seven-member board, I recommend no more than two if you do have board members that sit on the bargaining team. You also need to determine what's the role of the superintendent. And that varies by district size. So when I was in the Reynolds School District, when I got started on the board, we had 6,000 students, you're 4,000, you said. When I got off the board, we had about 10,000 students. Our superintendent never came to a bargaining session, he was a resource to both sides, and didn't show up at the table, wasn't even in the building when the bargaining sessions were taking place. So, but in small districts, sometimes a superintendent is the spokesperson for the board. I don't ever advocate for that position because he has to work both sides. I point he now because you've got two men here that have served as superintendent. But they have to enforce the contract while they're negotiating contract, they have to keep good harmonious relationships with the union, so I don't, I don't recommend that the superintendent be the spokesperson for the board, but you guys get to decide that, you decide that yourself. So you need to decide the superintendent's role. You would need to decide latitude to give to your spokesperson on compensation. So are we, you know, totally financially stuck and we don't have any additional resources? Are we looking at a cut? Can, you know, are we gonna ask them to like maintain their current compensation level? So we're, we're gonna not give them any, you know, we can't, we don't feel like we can offer anything? Or up to what percentage do you feel like is within the budget coming up and over the next three years? Where do we think we can go with our bargaining? I remember one time in Reynolds, we, we were in a tight situation like this. We, our business manager was advising us, I mean, yeah, our business manager, so you're like your Steve Nielsen, was advising us, and we felt like we could probably go up 2%. I mean, it was tight, but we thought we could maybe get up to 2%. And when we sat down at the table and the teacher said we'd be willing to take one, we said, okay. And left with one. So if we had had to talk about that in open session and said, well, we'd be willing to go to 2%, then they all would've just said, well, we want 2%. And, you know, and then that way we weren't being fiscally responsible for the, to the taxpayers in our community to keep it relatively low. So you have a lot of decisions to make about this kind of stuff. And then based on the feedback, you would identify any elements to bargain. So by that, what I mean is, there was a year where it was being recommended to us that we remove the early retirement provision as it was currently written in our contract with our teachers because it was basically cost us a whole lot more money than it was originally intended to save us. And so on that advice of the feedback from this, our board agreed to try to do what we could do to remove, completely remove the early retirement language. But we knew we had to replace it with something. So in identifying what elements to bargain, we also identified what we would be willing to offer in exchange. So you would have, the board would need to have kind of decisions on all of this. And then your, whoever your spokesperson is, they need to really understand bargaining, they need to understand the laws around bargaining. They have to be emotionally calm individuals that aren't gonna get all excited at the table. They have to be able to deal with conflict and maintain, you know, a pleasant persona. All of these kinds of things that you would wanna look for in your spokesperson are gonna be really important because they're then gonna carry all of your messages to that team. And they are going to bring these, what we call, I don't remember disclosures or what the word is, but this is what we wanna bargain. And then the union, on the other hand, is doing all of this same kind of prep work, and they're bringing forward, this is what we want to bargain. And then you're actually starting to sit down at the table. Oh, another decision you have to make is whether they will be closed or public. And both, both parties have to agree to which way it will be if they're gonna be closed or public. So that's another decision that you're gonna have to make. And then you, then it begins basically with all of these decisions made. They set up a schedule, your team assembles, the union's team assembles, and your spokesperson starts talking. And if any of, if any board members are on the team, you don't talk at the table. Because anything that a board member says, they're gonna interpret as, oh, that's what the board has decided. So, so you don't talk in the room, but you can do this thing called caucus. And so you can sign a note to your spokesperson if you have a question, or if you want a caucus. So you can slide that over, and all they have to do is declare a caucus, and the team gets up, walks out of the room and into another room, and you can ask your questions, or you can talk about whatever is going back and forth at the table.
So the spokesperson is the only person that should be talking at the table?
Yes, yes, and the union will have the same kind of an approach. They'll have one person that will be representing the union. So it's kind of funny little story, a little aside. The night that I was appointed to the board and the one board member that voted no, and then changed his mind and ended up voting yes for me, he ended up going back to college and getting his teacher, teaching degree. So he left the board and he went to teach in our district, didn't even teach in a different district, and so I don't remember his name right now. I don't remember at all, but I was like, so, are you gonna, are we ever gonna see you across the table for bargaining? And he was like, oh, no, and I said, that's good, because you know how we think. And he says, yeah, that is good, because I know how you think. Yeah, the last time I bargained, he was the spokesperson for the teacher. So it was really interesting.
Renee, can I ask, so, so we're in the midst of negotiations and, and while both sides have a spokesperson, there's at least, and I've only attended two, and I think the first one intentionally was to get me up to speed. Um, both sides at the table trying to get me up to speed. Different parties are taking turns talking or sharing perspectives is, you know, on both sides. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know what rules of engagement they've agreed to.
We do, we do have, we do have agreements.
Yeah.
I couldn't say whether it was only that one spokesperson's talking. I can tell you that if that's an expectation, no one is following it. But.
Yeah.
Multiple people across the table are talking to each other.
So it sounds like that was a discussion, the first one about ground rules?
Yes, ground rules were established.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, I only participated in Reynolds negotiations when I was on the board in Reynolds during. during those nine and a half years, both classified and certified. I've participated in both, and that's my only experience since I don't work in the Labor Department.
Okay.
So I don't know how common that is. But I do know that, um, you know, and I know the Hungerfords do this and they are representing you guys or the Hungerfords. I would really check with Nancy or whoever it is.
No, Nancy invited me to speak to certain things, so...
And Nancy and I have kind of tag teamed on different aspects of different topics.
Yeah, and so I can't say. I just know that generally it's just the spokesperson and, I mean, I asked a question out loud at the table, you know, and it was just a question, but, um, otherwise I just slid my notes, you know, and to our HR director who was the spokesperson for the board. Um, in Reynolds, we didn't hire OSBA, and I was just a young board member at that time and didn't really know to, to bring in somebody from the outside, but...
I do think that before the two that we've been to, just one person was speaking on, on at least SFSD, SFSD side of the table.
Okay.
Yeah. So anyway, this is all the preparation and then in the meetings, and then they do this thing called tentative agreements. We refer to it as a TA. And so once the entire list of all the things that the board brought forward, all the things that the union brought forward and that we agreed collectively, okay, these are the elements that we'll bargain this year. Once they've all been TA'd and it's all done, then it goes back to each respective party to be ratified or voted upon. So then the board's role then is to vote on the contract. That's your ultimate role in the end, is to, is to vote on it. And they, um, that takes a majority to pass, a majority of the seven. So it takes four or more votes to, uh, pass the contract. And then that's your operating agreement for employment for that group, plus your other HR laws and all that other good stuff. So, did that help?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
It helped a lot.
So we have an executive... So once everything is worked through and there's the TA, then it comes to us in executive session and we...
We vote on it.
And we vote on it publicly and then we...
Well, we discuss it, and then we get out of the executive session, and then we vote on it.
So, so sometimes through the process, depending on how long it's taking and if there's any like sticky spots, um, your spokesperson will ask for an executive session with the whole board. Uh, it just depends on what's happening, um, inside the, inside the bargaining. Sometimes they're snapped and they're over with, like one or two meetings and they're done. And sometimes they can get really sticky. And your spokesperson's gonna need some more guidance around this and your, uh, this. And they might say, well, you wanted to get rid of collective bargaining and we've been at the table and we've been, I mean, it's like a early retirement, and we've been at the table and we're trying to get rid of early retirement. Yes, we've offered up your alternative, they're not buying it. We're stuck. So they might come back to the board, and then you would meet an executive session with your spokesperson and troubleshoot together. You know, give your spokesperson some feedback of, well, where else are you willing to go? Um, you know, give them some more latitude for what you want and listen to, uh, listen to what they have to say. And then, once the contract is TA'd, I forgot that one step.
So when did bargaining start for us?
May 15th?
No, it was April 23rd.
It was early April.
Cause she corrected me. Remember I had that, May 15th. But maybe the ground rules were in that April meeting and they didn't actually exchange.
I think you may be right. I think they took a whole session to do ground rules.
So, so the clock doesn't start ticking about 150 days until articles are exchanged?
That's the word. Thank you. I couldn't remember the terminology, articles are exchanged. I couldn't remember that. Yeah, I couldn't remember that part that comes in here, so... Thank you.
And I don't think there's anybody at this table that was in the April 23rd meeting.
Yeah. Were there, were there members of the board, were there members of the board on the team?
There were two volunteered and one made it.
So you had two...
Two, maybe a couple of them.
So you did have two board members identified?
We did.
You had your spokesperson, which was Nancy.
Well, Brian.
Well, we didn't even...
No, it was, well, it was Brian.
Oh, it was Brian.
It was, it was Brian.
Now it's Nancy.
No, it's Nancy.
It, it's, there've been a lot of moving parts.
There has.
Okay, it's a Hungerford firm. It was a Hungerfords firm. That was your spokesperson.
Correct.
Okay. Who else was on the team? HR director, business manager?
Yes, yes.
The superintendent, the assistant superintendent, the business director.
Drew.
Drew.
Is he the business director, the guy just...
No.
Okay, so he's the addition? And then he had two...
A principal.
A principal, right.
Gotta look out for that person.
Actually, two principals.
Yes, Wade and Kevin.
Kevin, right. I thought that was two.
All right. And then your spokesperson were the Hungerfords? Okay, and so the superintendent was a part of the board team?
I thought Drew was, um, um, Brian Hungerford the spokesperson?
Correct.
At the beginning? Or was Andy?
Was the first?
Did Andy speak?
I think they split it. Um, Brian was at the table for sure.
Right. But, yeah.
He was our spokesman.
Okay.
Nancy took over, Nancy took over in, uh, the, my first one, and that was due to Brian's scheduling.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. It's fine if the videos don't work, I'll just skip them if you wanna go home. It's totally...
Daniel can turn up the volume, that's all you're gonna have to do. Just volume, and I was on the right side.
Sure. I didn't know you were sitting out there.
No, I'm still working.
Sorry. Oh, well, whatever. I just, I wanted to release you on my part, but you know, your boss is here, you know what you wanna do. Yeah. So are you close to TA'd?
We TA'd a lot of articles, a lot of parts of articles, but there are many, there have been many articles brought up, so...
So there's, it's gonna be a long process?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
In the 150 days, where are you?
Uh, I think it's, what did somebody say? It was September, October until August.
Okay, so you got a little bit of time, but it means more meetings for the bargaining team.
Or right now, we're at a standstill with meetings. We don't have any on the board.
Um, I would encourage you to put some pressure on to get those meetings scheduled because the clock is ticking. So... And I didn't even, even think to get into the whole 150 days, much to start. And then you got this whole schematic, if you're not done, you know, does it go to arbitration? Does it go to mediation? Where's it go? You mean, there's a whole schematic, and I didn't even insert that slide.
Can you insert that a little bit?
Not really. I could, I would have to go out on our network and pull up, um, a presentation, but I don't, since I don't work in this department, this isn't an area that I know really, really well.
Okay.
Um, like the Labor Department.
Right. So they would have more details, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the, the woman who presented that is in bed.
She doesn't work for us anymore though.
Oh, it was Peggy?
She works for Salem Kaiser now.
Oh.
I know, I'm sad. But we still have the Labor Department, so Michael and Maria are still there.
Um, I have a question. Is, is it possible for the board members to have like a comparison of what the articles are and so far what has been changed? Or is it just more effective to say, this is what we started with and this is where we're at? It's probably a lot easier because then it's not as fluid.
Yeah, you can, you can review in an executive session what's been TA'd to date.
Oh, good.
Certainly you can, yeah.
Yeah, you can redo.
I can do that.
And I've attempted, so I've got a notebook and I, I tried to give it to Janet today, but then I realized it wasn't very, organized very well. But, uh, that we could walk through.
Oh, good.
Kind of what was the initial proposal, and you can see point, counterpoint.
Yes.
What's, what's been TA'd and kind of, uh, historical from the first session to present.
Oh, good.
And you can do that in executive session?
Yeah.
I would like that.
Yeah, I would too.
Personally, just to see what progress is being made.
Right, yeah. It's good to be informed.
Yeah, and just, you know, any, any items that need more discussion, you know? Just, it just depends, you know, what you would wanna talk about, but you certainly can.
And I can also give you a spreadsheet that both SFEA and SFD have shared together. Just kind of, it's a spreadsheet that we just, we're all on the same page here, right? As far as kind of where the progress is done, and so it's a mutually shared document that, that's been useful.
Has that been updated?
I believe, I'll have to go back in and check, but I, I thought I saw August 5th dates on there.
Oh, okay.
Cause when, yeah, when I saw it, it was, it was...
Still needing to...
Well, no, it was to date, but then we had the next meeting, and I didn't know when that process of, of... Cause I think that you and Michelle sit down, or Kevin and Michelle sit down, or Drew and Michelle, somebody and Michelle sat down to make sure that everybody was, uh, in agreement that the spreadsheet was, you know, like this is where we're at. So I don't know if that's happened, especially after the way things ended.
Right, I'll check on that.
Cause I'm guessing, I'm guessing the board did not review the current contract prior to the beginning of COVID.
No, no.
Nope, we didn't. We were given some kind of summary.
Well, but it wasn't discussed in executive session or it wasn't, um, you know, talked about beforehand, before they were going into doing all of it, so...
Yeah, we did, we did.
No, not really.
I've been at every single meeting and there was, uh, a, a time when we were given a short summary of what the issues were going to be at that time.
But it wasn't super detailed at all.
No, it wasn't.
Given updates very much at all, so I had no idea what was going on.
So it, it sounds like we'll be needing one of those.
Well, I think that, I think they...
That's what you guys are planning to do is to give us a...
Yeah. Oh, is that what we're doing next week?
Yeah, they understand that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good.
All right.
Great.
So that's one of the ways, going back to the Lighthouse information, that boards create conditions for success. Because you're, you want your contract to be such that is going to create working conditions that are going to allow your staff to fulfill your expectations of student learning. And so there's, and there's a lot of elements inside of the contract. Um, and so that's just one of the areas that you do that. On this page, we can, um, include this support with the board's role of what we call holding the system accountable at the same time. So then, when you've set those really clear expectations and set that strategic direction for the system based on the learning that you've done together, and the learning is also then helps you to identify the various supports, board supports, we believe it's equally important for the board to then create a, a plan to monitor towards those desired outcomes. So towards those expectations that have been set, how is a board going to know that those expectations are being met? What evidence will tell the board? Um, and on the slide up there, I got a whole bunch of different charts and graphs and numbers and all kinds of things that, you know, data that can be pulled together. But it's not always only hard data that informs boards, you know? Something that you can, um, put into an Excel spreadsheet and make a chart around. Uh, sometimes it's perceptual data matters. And so getting feedback from people, um, can be, it depends on what it is that you're trying to move towards, but it can be an evidence that the board would want to consider.
And Renee, how are these plans developed? Because this has been, I've said this probably every time we have this meeting, that our, form should, we tend to, did a good job of informing us on like strategic vision, you know, strategic goals and, and reporting to us, but I really have always felt that that's our job and that we need to do it.
Yeah.
And so how do boards go about developing those accountability plans?
So generally, it helps to have, um, somebody from the outside help facilitate that for you. So, um, so that everybody can fully participate in the discussions and can kind of help guide and direct the conversation. So when I have helped boards with that, and we look at what they say their vision is or their strategic direction or their, uh, their goals or whatever terminology that they are using to say, this is what we want. So then we, we brainstorm kind of ideas around, um, well, what will tell you if that's happening? And depends on how many things that we're measuring is depending on how many lists of idea, you know, of possible evidences that we look at. And then in collaboration with, uh, your leadership, we talk about what's appropriate of your list. Not everything that board members come up with is really board level information. So we have to tease out what's really appropriate at the board level, what teachers would be using in classroom we probably wouldn't bring to, to board members, and even perhaps what administrators use in a building we might not bring to the board level. But what would, of these lists of all these things that you come up with, what would be appropriate board level information? And these educational professionals would help with that. And then they would tell you, well, if you want to see, oh, say the state test results, for example, because those are fairly easy to identify, they say, great, but we're not gonna get those from the state till probably the late August, if we, if we even get them then. So if we're gonna put those into your plan of evidence that you're gonna pay attention to, let's say we review those in September. So, okay, now we have an element for September, and we're gonna look at it. And then, so what aspects of the state test do you want to pay particular attention to? Cause there's various elements of that. So then you would identify which parts of the state test, um, or how deep that you would go into it. You would then say, well, we wanna see our attendance records. How are we doing? Do we have a chronic absenteeism problem or are we making progress in that? Cause if kids aren't in school, how can they learn, right? At least learn academic. Kids are always learning something. Those little brains are always absorbing something. So, you know, we have to find out, you know, uh, do we wanna look at that? And if, and why would we wanna look at it? Is it gonna, you know, are we trying to make strides in improving attendance? Well, when would we look at it? What data would we actually bring forward to look at attendance? And so that's where the educational professionals come in to help you. And that's why it's nice to have something facilitated because, and then everybody can participate, and somebody else can then just kind of map it all out and create this plan that over the months and years, um, you know, of a school year, over the months of a school year, this is the data that we're gonna look at. These guys will help you decide who's bringing that forward to the board. You know, do we want elementary principals to come and talk to us? Do we want, you know, to hear from a group of teachers? Who do we want? You know, who would be the best people to bring that information to the board? So that the board can do its work of holding the system accountable. Another major aspect of holding the system accountable, and hopefully something that we'll get a chance to talk about, is the superintendent evaluation. Cause that's the one employee that you evaluate. And it's really important in your holding the system accountable to identify what criteria are you gonna be evaluating the superintendent on? What process will you be using for that evaluation? What timeline are you going to be using for the evaluation? And you have to do all of those three conversations in a pub, open public meeting like this in order to meet in executive session with your superintendent to give him feedback on the evaluation findings, how the board finds the superintendent and allows superintendent to share with you, um, how he sees his performance over the year in relation to the criteria you've identified, unless he asks for it to be in public. You know, but you have, if you don't do those other three pieces in a public meeting, then you can't do the executive session, um, for the evaluation piece. So that's another part of holding the system accountable because you hire a superintendent who then hires the rest of the team to accomplish your objectives. We want the children of Silverton and its greater surroundings to be educated so that they can be successful today and into the future, or whatever your mission is, you know? Um, and it's on the professional educators to do that. And you only really have one individual to hold accountable while you're holding the system accountable. So, um, you need to just come up with a plan, Shelley. Um, you need to have a work session, talking about types of meetings. You need to have a work session and, and hammer that set out. Hammer that plan out. But it's hard to do that if you haven't set the clear expectations first and you haven't identified the elements that the board is willing to support in order to see success in those areas of where you set expectations.
If you have strategic planning process, which we do, then it seems to me that you aren't gonna duplicate that, that this would be part and parcel of that process.
Yes, yes.
It's all supposed to dovetail.
It should.
All supposed to align.
It should, yes, yes, it should. So, uh, how OSBA sees it is that you set that overarching direction. They go get the plan... They go get the plan, the detailed stuff, you know. Oh, we're going to have third graders doing this, we're going to have sixth graders doing that, and we're going to send our teachers this professional development and we're going to buy this curriculum. You know, whatever is those elements of the plan, that's not your stuff. But you look at that to say, yeah, yeah, we we think that's going to get us to where we say we want to go. Or it's like, I don't know, it seems disconnected. Can you explain how doing this is going to get us here? So they can then help you see the elements. And in well-constructed strategic plans, they've also identified those key performance indicators or targets or whatever the language is that they use to say, if we get this far doing this, these actions, then we know we're making progress towards our ultimate thing. And it's possible that those some of those key performance indicators might be things that you, the board, would also look at. So, yes, it's possible, but it might not be. I mean, some of those elements are deep down inside the system and they need to be paying attention to it as professional educators to make sure that they're making progress. But it doesn't necessarily rise to the board level data for evidence that you're making progress towards your ultimate outcome, 100% of graduation, students succeeding at grade level, you know, whatever it is that you're setting as your target for Silver Falls students. Yeah. And then when you have all of that, then we believe there's a role for the board in what we call creating the public will to succeed. An former colleague of mine wrote a book on that. He calls it engaging collective will for student success. So if you want any kind of a how-to book, recommend his work. He he calls it, and I agree with it, the hardest yet most satisfying effective governance team role is this role of what we call creating the public will to succeed or he calls engaging collective will for student success. This is my personal copy that he gave, signed and gave to me, so I'm keeping it. But there aren't that many books out there on it if you want to take a look at it. But I'm going to take it when I leave tonight. Second page of your booklet is what we call the focus framework. It has all five of the board's roles all in one place to kind of help guide your thinking. And and this is also a really good tool for administration for when they want to bring some new idea forward. Then they can be thinking about, okay, what's the board's role in whatever this new idea is that we think we want to bring before the board? So like, for example, if we would have used this for area being discussed collective bargaining, you could have used this tool to kind of guide you. So what are our greatest hopes for the district through this collective bargaining process? What is it that the board hopes to accomplish through this collective bargaining process? What do we need to learn? Obviously, a fair amount. But what do we need to learn about collective bargaining as a board and superintendent team so that we can be successful in it? What are we willing to support to ensure that our expectations can be met? Like, are we willing to identify two board members to serve on the team? Are we willing to devote the time to the bargaining sessions for, you know, that kind of a thing? This holding the the system accountable, what evidence will we accept towards those expected outcomes? Are, you know, we would want all our elements TA'd, you know what I mean? But what really would tell you whatever your expectations for collective bargaining are? Like, if we want happy teachers, which is such a vague statement, how in the world would you even know if you had happy teachers? I mean, if that was one of your expectations. I finally had to tell a board member in Idaho, they kept saying that over and over and over and over and over again. Finally, I had to turn to her and I went, it's not your role. It's not your responsibility to ensure you have happy teachers. We want them happy, yes, absolutely. We want them happy, because you have a more important aspect. And then how can you get other people excited about what you're going to be doing, you know, in that collective bargaining process? So I'm just saying, this is a tool for the board to use in whatever work you see coming ahead of you. Depending on the area being discussed, it's highly unlikely the board would ever complete all five rule conversations about all five of these rules in a single meeting. It's not, it's just really not feasible. Because once you identify what you're going to learn, then you just have to go learn it, which is another session. You usually don't identify what you need to learn and learn it in the same night. Not usually. It just just depends on what it is. So I sometimes use this example, like if we were going to discuss brain research around start and stop times for school for teenagers. So what's the best time to start school based on brain research for teenagers? Well, why would we even care? What expectations would we want? You know, what are we going to need to learn about that if we're going to consider changing start stop times for teenagers, you know, are we going to move our high schools? It's not going to start till 10:00 AM now because we know they need to sleep late. Well, how feasible is that really and so on and so forth? But you can use this kind of a thing to help think through what is the board's role around any kind of initiative or new idea that the school district is thinking of bringing forward? I was I did this training in November with the Roseburg Board. They wanted to get some basic roles and responsibilities. And I went down there Friday. They have a brand-new superintendent and so we were doing this transition work to help the superintendent and the board through all kinds of operating agreements and working together and whatnot. He sat down next to me and he opened his computer. This was in a room because I got there early. And the first thing I saw, he opened his computer, was the role of the board and he had a subject area in there and he had elements. And I'm like, my gosh, you're brand-new on the job and you're using this already? I'm so impressed. Because the Roseburg Board really decided to really act on it. And they've built the learning together as a board team. They've built learning sessions into their business meetings. And so they talked, we talked to them through that when I was there on Friday, what they want those to accomplish with now that they have a new superintendent. So they've done a lot of stuff around this, these five roles. I was very impressed with the Roseburg Board when I was down there Friday. They did well. So we've been at this now, you guys have been sitting here for about an hour and 20 minutes. Do you need to get up, move a little bit like this guy? I've been talking a lot. Do you need to take a little break, stretch your legs, use the restrooms?
My mother-in-law told me this piece of advice this weekend.
Your mom did?
Mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law. You're not taking good enough care of her son, huh? Don't answer, we're on camera. Yeah, I love breakfast for dinner. It's like comfort food. So so thank you for coming back. I did not share my two rules. I'm like falling apart tonight. So but you guys have been doing pretty good. But how did you let me not do that, Shelley and Jennifer? You guys know me. My two rules. I always forgot to share my two rules. Rule number one is I want you to be comfortable, so please take care of your needs as they arise. Don't have to wait for a break. And rule number two, you've been doing a great job on, which is like, please engage and talk. I don't like to do all the talking, even though I know I was hired to come here and talk. I just don't want to do it all. So the second page of your book was the role of the board that we just identified. This third page then is a calendar that Debbie has a fillable PDF copy of if you want to use this to calendar out your work in relation to these five roles. So like, for example, if in September, you were going to review student learning data from your state tests, I mean, just saying for example, you could put that under this monitoring progress. In September, review student state tests or whatever, you know what I'm saying? Or review elements of the state report card or that that in September, you would have a monitoring session around student achievement. And so we created this calendar so that you could do that and when you're going to learning. So like in August, you could have put, you know, OSBA training in district, you know, into your calendar. But you guys have been doing that every year for the last five years. Thank you very much for continuing working with us. We appreciate it very much and me in particular, I appreciate it very much. So so now let's kind of switch gears a little bit and talk about governance and management in kind of a high-level conversation. And then after we have that conversation, we'll get into answering your questions on the quiz that you probably forgot all about. Yeah, oh, yeah. So when you look at that slide on the screen, and I know that the bright lights make it a little hard to see governance and management, there's no wrong answer. But as you look at that, what do you see? What stands out to you?
There's a difference.
There is a difference. She sees a difference. Yeah, yeah, so Lori sees a difference.
I think governance is kind of like precision a little bit. But management is a lot of up and down and around and, you know, can be unstable or stable and you have to manage a lot of people. I don't know. It's just you're kind of.
Governance tells you what direction to go.
Governance tells you direction. It's more stable, it's on a post, it's a single thing. Management's got a whole bunch of different pieces to it on a shelf, maybe not quite so stable.
But governance.
Maybe.
But governance is also not infiltrated with management. There's a separate.
Okay.
Situ, you know, governance is here, management is here, and everybody has their thing to do. And they don't really intertwine very much at all. So that's a physical difference, I suppose, in visual.
Great observations. This is awesome. So oftentimes, I just get people to just stare back at me. Thank you for fulfilling role number two or rule number two and engaging and talking with me. I really appreciate it. I I agree with everything that I heard. And another way that sometimes we look at that is that the governance is the what. This is what we want to have happen and the management is how you're going to get there. So, for example, I was working with a board recently that says, we need to hire a communications director. And I said, well, maybe, maybe not, you know. But what is it that you want to have happen? And you direct your superintendent with the what you want to have happen and you let your superintendent come back with a plan on how to get there may or may not entail hiring a communications director. But it's not up to the board to say, we need to hire a communications director.
But it's a board as a collective group that needs to direct.
Absolutely, 100%.
It's very important to remember that.
Yes, absolutely. And when we talk about the individual board member, like, that is definitely there. And you actually have that in policy as well.
It is.
Yeah. You know, another way of looking at it is the ends versus the means. So the what versus the how for the ends versus the means, the governance pointing the direction. This is the end that we want. Paul, thank you very much. Now go make that happen for us with your team. He's really the only individual you can direct. And he, as Shelley rightly pointed out, and he works for a board, he has one boss. He does not have seven bosses. He has one boss. The board is a singular entity. It can only have one voice, not seven voices. Similar kind of thing with this slide. What do you see when you look at that slide? It's a little bit more going on in this one.
Superintendent informing the board.
Okay, superintendent informing the board. Paul sees that.
But those are their lanes, the board lane and the superintendent.
Okay, so we got a white lane for the board and a black lane for the superintendent.
I think it's also the superintendent, the operations, regulations and personnel presenting to the board and how they fit in the policy's goals or advocacy that the board has set maybe. So when the superintendent comes and says and talks about, let's just say, those three specific things, how that is implemented or how that's affecting the goals, policies and advocacy.
You're going to enable those things to happen?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay, all right.
So the board has to be well-informed on their goals, policy. So as the superintendent comes to them, they know how to review and weigh the information at hand.
I don't see arrows pointing down. There's a reason for that. I wonder why that is.
Any guesses? I I have an opinion, obviously, cut the slide, but just curious.
The only thing that I would guess is that the board isn't managing the superintendent. The board is providing the vision, checking in, holding accountable, but not doing this and digging into the day-to-day.
Very good observation, Janet. Very good. I'm fighting for my job when I retire. So the the reason why we have one-way arrows at OSBA is to demonstrate that the superintendent can and should come up into your lane and help you do your work. You're not going to know what a reasonable goal is to set without his input. He's going to, you know, 99.9% of the time, he's going to bring forward to you policy recommendations on policy changes and tell you what we need when it comes to policy. You're not going to necessarily know that. And he can certainly help you with advocacy language and wording and give you talking points and, you know, this is now, this is now our our thing here in Silver Falls and here's some ways that you can talk about that out in the community. But you guys don't ever, 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 ever get to go down into his world. You don't get to get involved in the day-to-day operations. You don't get to get involved in managing personnel as much as you might not like Principal X or teacher so-and-so's. That's not your job. And regulations, you don't vote on those unless there's a few federal special education regulations that the law says you have to vote on. But other than that, it's his responsibility per policy that you have given to him. You you gave to the superintendent in policy the responsibility to write any regulations that policies require a regulation for. And oftentimes, we provide those at OSBA anyway and you just massage them to fit, you know, your system. But it's on the, it's the superintendent's responsibility. Yes, you look at those things in the sense of providing your broader oversight to make sure that they are going to allow you to meet your objectives, but not for the management part of it.
And I guess I would say, and you can correct me, is that because you're not supposed to be fiddling and managing, then that really calls on you, I think, to have a really well-articulated understanding and and a really good vision. You know what I mean? It doesn't get you off the hook. It means that you actually have to do a better job on the other end because you don't get to just fix things when you don't see they're going right.
Yes, yeah. And when there's a hiccup in the road, you know.
You have to have set the right guidance along the way.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. And have the monitoring plan, what are the evidences that we're going to look at that we're agreed upon together? These are the evidences that are going to tell us that our policies are being fulfilled, that we're reaching our objectives with student learning, that the system is running smoothly, you know, that we're that the management of the system is happening. You need to provide that general oversight, but you don't approve the bills to pay. You did that when you adopted a budget, you know, so, yeah. However, what we have found is doing this board work is oftentimes like walking in a muddy stream and it's really easy to slip. And so it's really important to clearly identify your agreements and hold each other accountable so that you don't, when slippage does happen, that you don't get too sideways, that you can re-correct and get back into your proper lanes. Because your roles really are black and white, as the slide shows, but they're, but it's really easy to slip.
I always like the analogy of driving the bus where the superintendent's, you know, driving the bus and it was always made perfect sense for me.
What she's referring to is that as a school board, you say where you want the school bus to go and you provide the school bus and then the superintendent drives it there. He gets all the right people on the bus to use the, in Collins' good-to-great analogy, he gets all the right people on the bus and he gets them all in the right seats on the bus. And it's your responsibility to say, this is where we're going. Here's the budget for fuel and supplies and maintenance on the bus and, you know, pay people and whatnot. Here's the budget and here are the policies to manage bus. Now go take the bus where we want to go. Thanks, Debbie, for reminding me of that. I forget about that sometimes. So there's a division of work. So, there's a division of work here on the next page, on page five, that we'll also cover in a slide a little bit later if you want to, but I thought that we would kind of go to the quiz now. You ready? So we're going to bring up the question, and we're going to ask, is it board work or is it not board work? So you're going to get to answer by holding up the blue or pink card. I have a habit of picking on the lone person that held up a card of a different color than everybody else. And I ask them to explain what their thinking was, because sometimes, the minority is right. I mean, we have a majority rules in the United States, but majority isn't always right. So, so there's right answers to every one of these questions that are going to be answered by the Silver Falls School District policies. So there is a right answer, and we'll see how well you know them. So, question number one. Modifying the student discipline policy. Did you write a pink salmon card S or a blue card B? We're going to give him a little bit of a, we're going to give him some latitude in that he probably doesn't know the Silver Falls policies up, down, left, and right yet, okay? What, has he been on the job a week? Is that, how long has he been on the job?
Barely, not...
So, let's cut him a little bit of slack for maybe not knowing your policies, okay? But what did you write down, a B or an S? You wrote a B?
Well, I had a B, but this could be taken two different ways. And I can explain that in a minute.
Go ahead, explain it now.
So modifying the student discipline policy.
Right.
Is it the district policy that he wants to modify, or is it the discipline policy in the handbook for...
I assumed it was handbook.
I, so I looked at it, I'm like, "You need to be more specific, because if it's in the handbook, then it's the superintendent. If it's the district policy, then it has to come to us." So, that's a B, N, and S.
Why are you saying that's a B?
So that's my reasoning behind, I almost went like this.
And I won't let you.
And you won't let me, so it's, yeah, so I don't, I don't know.
So we write these questions to create this kind of a dilemma.
Yeah.
What do you think, Paul? Thank you, Shelley.
I think the correct answer is this one. However, I did write this because I was thinking, and maybe from my own experiences in the past, that I don't, I don't think it's important for board members to come in and say, "Here's what the policy needs to say," but it is really the ultimate board's responsibility to...
Approve it.
Approve it.
Approve it.
Right, so...
I had process very much in mind.
Yeah.
So there you go.
Any other one? Yeah, okay, so let's look at what, you have a policy development process, which are policies BF and BFA that kind of direct what happens with policy in your district. Your BA, and this one, BFC, which I should have put in there too, talks about the adoption and revision of policies. So, proposed policies or policy changes will be presented in writing by the board. So it would be the superintendent, most likely or not, that would bring that forward to you, right? Hey, I propose we change this policy. Here is what I'm proposing, it's in writing. However, adopting, the very first sentence, "Adopting new policies and changing or repealing existing policies is the board's responsibility," period. So...
There you go.
It is board work, because it's not modified until you've adopted it.
I got that one wrong.
Until then, it's just proposing it be modified. So the modifying comes, the actual, it's modified, we wrote it that way on purpose, comes at the end with the adoption. Anything before that is a proposed...
If you had written "adopting"...
I know.
There's words you left out. But we were like, wait a minute.
It's all about the conversation.
It's not, though.
It really is all about the conversation and understanding that nuanced differences. I've seen in some districts where the policy says, in this one where it says that the modifying will begin with the superintendent, because the superintendent will bring, like you were saying, Paul, the process part, will bring that before the board, saying, "We need to modify this policy," whatever it is. We just happened to pick student discipline. It could be anything. You know, any policy that, you know, would bring forth or would come from, your superintendent bringing that to your attention.
So I've had community members and other people approach me and say, you know, "Can you bring forth a policy, you know, to your superintendent or to the board?" And say, you know, "This policy, I would like to review it," or, "I'd like to see the language in here is a little bit, you know, I'm not sure that it's appropriate" or something of that nature, whatever. So basically, the question is, can a board member bring forth a policy and say, "Can we look at policy BDF and read that and have a conversation about it?"
Absolutely.
Okay.
And you would follow...
So that's important for the, for the community to know.
Yeah.
As well, so it's...
Kind of talking about protocols, for example?
Yes, right.
So you do have a policy, I don't, I don't think I've included it, but you have a policy for how your agenda is developed.
Right.
And most of them that I see say that if a board member or community member, anybody, wishes to have something placed on an agenda of an upcoming meeting, they need to put that in writing to the superintendent at least five days before the meeting. I'm trying to get that pushed out to 10 in a lot of districts, because five days really isn't sometimes enough time. Just because they ask it doesn't mean it gets put on, but, but you, so you're going to have a policy that will talk about how your agenda is developed.
Right.
And that's where then, as you as an individual board member say, "Hey, I'd like to talk about policy, you know, BDF or whatever it was you said, BFC, this one, whatever."
Whatever.
It doesn't matter.
Whatever, three letters it is.
It doesn't matter! But that's how the process would be. I would like to put that on an agenda for an upcoming meeting so that we can talk about policy, whatever.
Right.
That would be a protocol...
Right.
Of how to do that. And you certainly can, and policy is your number-one responsibility.
It is.
You know, that's...
Yep.
So you should be talking about policies at any given meeting, and how they relate to whatever aspect of work it is that you're discussing.
Right.
Which is partly why we created this quiz like we did, because it is helping you realize all those policies that are your responsibility, that oftentimes don't get talked about unless OSBA sends out a policy update.
Right.
Yeah. So new board members, Lori and Janet, do you know how to find the policies on your district website?
I can tell you right now, but yes, I have had them before.
You have?
I have too.
Perfect, okay, then we don't have to spend any time on this. I'll just whiz through these slides. So you do have this policy review policy that I thought I should share it with you as well, that you said that you're, you're going to review them routinely, and all newly-elected or appointed board members shall be informed of how to access it. So it sounds like you were informed how to access it, and this just kind of supports your statement, Shelley, that, yes, you're going to review these policies routinely.
Often.
That's your word, your word, in 2017. I don't know what the routine is, but you can certainly work it into this schedule, because there's a policy row along here, right there. There's a whole row for policy.
Did we get a new policy update recently?
Yes.
2017 and 18.
Yeah.
But we've been out of, out of the last session.
Yeah.
October, we'll get a whole bunch.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, they usually come out in September.
Right.
And which means that you'll probably look at them in beginning as a board in October, depending on your schedule and how you can do all your internal processes around the updates. Yeah. So here's just, again, showing you that you have that policy line on your calendar, because that's such a big aspect of work. Okay, number two. Establishing an in-school suspension system. Who does that? Oh, thank you. And it's right there in your policy, JG.
Yeah.
You know, you guys want to have a climate that's going to be conducive to learning, and therefore, the superintendent will develop those regulations that will allow you to have a climate, and if it needs to do disciplinary sanctions, he'll do those that are appropriate. And it might include an in-school suspension system, it might not, but it's not your job to decide. So thank you for making it easy. Question three. Approving the high school handbook, including specific dress code expectations. Who approves handbooks?
Oops.
Oops. Well, that's okay. What was your thinking that, that you chose that one? You're new, you're just learning. It's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sure, absolutely. I didn't get all these right the first time out the gate.
Oh, I was assuming approving, so it would come from the superintendent anyway, and say, "Here we have this," and then we would just not. So that's where I was coming from.
Okay, so...
We wouldn't direct any of it, it would come from the superintendent.
You wouldn't necessarily vote, "I move that we approve a high school handbook."
Oh, no, no.
Yeah. So you would just review them and say, "Yeah, these look good." That's what you were thinking?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay. See? Now aren't you glad you clarified that?
Yes.
Because that is your role.
Oh, okay.
To just kind of review them and say, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, they align with policy. Good." You know, but you have in your policy that you last adopted in 2017, that you expect the handbooks to be approved by the superintendent or designated. So you've stated in there that it is his job. But you can certainly review them, and well, you should, just to make sure that, yeah, this is what we're telling people. It's good, yep, this matches our policy expectations. And if you felt like it didn't match your policy expectations, then you would be, "Hey, Paul, what's up?" You know, "How, we don't feel like this aligns. Can you explain to us how this aligns, or do we need to change this, or what's the thinking behind this?" You know, if there's a section that you were worried about.
But we do have policies that talk about, you know, bullying and such, and so I think those lines, you know, it can get a little gray, you know, when people...
Gray how? Gray how?
Well, like, we have several policies that talk about, you know, harassment and bullying and hazing in their actual board policies.
Right.
And so I think when, you know, when you take those, those words from the policy and implement them into the handbook, and then you have people come to you and say, "Well, this is in the handbook, but it's not a policy," and, you know, and so it's kind of, they think that as a board member, you're supposed to do something about that. And that's where it can get a little gray, and you say, "No, you need to go talk to the superintendent. We don't approve this handbook, but we do approve the policy of the district."
But, yeah.
So there, it can get a little, I've had that happen before.
Okay.
And I've had to really kind of clarify, you know, I've had to go back and I'm like, "Okay, well, we have these policies, the board policies, but, you know, there's the handbook too."
Right, the steps in the handbook shouldn't lead people away from the policy. The steps in the handbook should clarify in more detail.
Right.
Like the dress code use, or even the discipline one where you say you want an environment that's conducive to learning. That's your policy for that. And we want kids to come to school in clothes that are...
Right.
Going to allow learning, but then they get more detailed in the handbook around, "Well, student discipline then means no fighting in the hallways, blah, 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 blah. You can't wear, you know, gang-affiliated attire or whatever." That you wouldn't put in a policy. Same with bullying. You know, the, it's going to be high-level policy, and then you've got those detailed statements inside the handbook.
But there are, so community members think that as board members, we can change all of that.
Oh, that's the gray area you're talking about.
That's the gray area, so maybe I wasn't clear.
I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding.
It was, and I might not have been clear too. But that, so there's, so there's people that come up to us as board members and say, "You have to change the policy on this." I'm like, "Well, wait a minute. Do, there's a policy and there's a handbook, so I have to literally explain the differences." So as new board members, you know, coming on, it's important to understand that there's a district policy, that it's a board policy that's different from the handbook, and the handbook needs to be talked about with the superintendent, but the po- the board policy we can talk about in a general terms. So that, it can get, it can get a little bit gray if, if, you know, it's not clearly understood. And I had to go back a little bit, I'm like, "Oh, wait a minute." And I just had to make a clarity. So just, just for your information, it's, it's important to, it's a learning lesson.
Yeah.
Some people will use that word "policy" to describe, maybe in classroom practice or a school-wide tradition.
Right.
They're not following board, you know, they're not following policy. And so I think stipulating the clarification, are you talking about a board policy?
Right, right. Because there are, policy is used loosely.
Yes, yeah, it really is.
And I learned that the last couple of years. So I just wanted to make it clear that, and Dan's right, it's just used, you know, the high school handbook policy, you know, and, yeah, so just, it's a good, a good thing to learn.
Yeah, point, point well made.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you want to add, Paul? Okay, it looked like you wanted to say something. So, very good. How about number four, reviewing applications for a football coach, yada, yada, yada. Yes, absolutely. A football coach can be a licensed teacher, like the math teacher also coaches football, but technically, the football coach is a classified position, and in most districts, the boards don't have any role to play at all in classified employment. And even if it's an extra duty added on to a licensed individual. So, yeah, you're right, you don't do that, and you do have this general personnel policy, GB. And bottom line on that is that the superintendent will establish the regulations governing the recruitment, selection, and employment of personnel in accordance with this policy. It's on the superintendent to do that. But what about administrators? Question number five.
Administrators?
Well, our room is split, look at that. The board thinks one thing, and the administration thinks another thing.
Because of three little words.
Well, that's right.
And what are those three little words?
Sets the expectation.
That's right. Sets the expectation.
So says Janet.
So you can do your job.
She really does want to see me when I retire.
Yeah.
So, yes, that's right, this is board work, and you don't have this particular policy, CCC. It's not required by law, you don't have to have it. But boards that do have this policy are making it really clear that they are setting an expectation by having the policy that there be hiring practices or, you know, procedures. We want procedures for hiring our administrators, and we want to be sure that you follow them. This caused a little bit of angst in a district on the other side of the river a few, a couple few months ago. This particular policy and how a superintendent went about some changes in administration. So you don't have it, so I don't know if your board has set the expectations around the hiring of administrators, and if they're, I'm assuming you have procedures. I'm assuming that they're there, but I don't know if you have this particular policy. You don't have to. It's not required by law to have this policy.
That's a really good notation, though, that some policies are required, some are under-recommended, and some are...
Optional.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have recommended, highly recommended, and required are the three designations that the policy department uses at OSBA. And this would be maybe a recommended policy, but certainly not highly required.
Is that still located in the lower-left of most of those policies, or you can see that?
I don't know how they send them to you, but I think so. I think that they do. I know they're not, they don't remain on, once you've adopted them, they take them off and then...
Updates.
Yeah.
It's noted there.
Yeah, I thought they did, yeah. All right, question number six. We're getting about halfway through the quiz. Collaborates with the staff to set the priority goal or the direction or whatever, and we just picked one for you, high-quality instruction will be the focus of the school district.
Okay.
Rites with staff?
Number six.
Staff was the tricky word.
Staff is the tricky word.
Staff is a tricky word. Collaborates with staff is a tricky word.
I assumed that staff was the superintendent, but that's not right. I was focusing on setting the goal.
Yeah?
Well-
Let's see what your policy says, shall we?
Instruction will be a focus in the school district.
So you have this policy AE on district goals. And I highlighted there in the box, "The district will develop in a partnership with staff, parents, and community members to identify and revise goals, yada, yada, yada." So, there's nothing that says you cannot. It's not common practice for boards to collaborate with staff around the setting of the goal. But you are a part of the district and you are definitely community members. Some of you might even be parents, can't be staff and be on the board. But if you are going to do something like that and bring staff and board together to talk about direction setting and where you would want to go, there's an accompanying policy to this one, which is policy BG, which I don't have yet, we'll bring it up a little bit later. But if you were to do this, you would do it through the superintendent. There would be a very orderly process that would be identified. The superintendent would invite the staff to come, saying the board wants to collaborate with staff around where we go as a district. What direction are we gonna set? What are our goals going to be? Where are we, what are we working towards? And it would set it up. You wouldn't, as a board, just decide to go show up in the school and meet with staff. You don't do that. But you can. So, the answer to this is generally, it's the superintendent, but it could be the board.
So it is a B slash S.
It is B slash S.
But in your district, you might say, "Yeah, we do it all the time." You know, if you had already got this practice established-
We do.
You could've said, "Yeah, in Silver Falls, the board does collaborate with the staff. We do it every year." Or, you know, "No, in Silver Falls, only the superintendent collaborates with the staff in goal-setting." And, of course, anybody. Whenever I say superintendent, I always mean the individual and everybody he delegates to.
Yes, right.
Yes, because he doesn't do every aspect of the job.
Right.
He delegates. But since you only have the one person to direct, that's who, that's who you talk to. So anyway, you can, if you want to. But this one, creating those specific strategies. For example, the professional development activities that are gonna get you to your high-quality instruction.
Shoot, shoot. You wrote down the board?
Yes.
You had a really good reasoning the last time you wrote down the board. What's your reasoning on this one?
Again, thank you.
You did.
Well, creates, I mean, when I think of like, create specific strategies, I'm often thinking about what the board can share and then bouncing it off. I'm always looking at the give and take that goes when you're talking to the administrators. "What about this?" And then see where it's filed, at least, and, because I've done that a few times. "I have a concern about this, but maybe it's none of my business too." You know? Or it's not my place. And I, and I don't mind having those conversations, so I know that I'm in the right lane.
Very good.
So that's, that was where I was.
I appreciate you sharing your thinking. So if we go back to that black and white slide with the lanes and the muddy water and the operations, the personnel, uh, the regulations, that all fell within the, within the superintendent's purview. So those specific activities are more of what we are, uh, thinking of. The, you know, the specific strategies rather than the creates, but, um, is that, it's, that's the day-to-day work of moving you towards your high-quality instruction goal. And so that would be superintendent's work, yeah. And, um, we recommend, I'll just throw this calendar in here again to just kind of show that we recommend for boards that are doing goal-setting work, um, and doing that collaboratively with staff and setting goals so that he can identify those specific strategies. We recommend that boards do that, um, before the budget is developed each year to just, you know, once your goals are set, to review them prior to the budget development process. Like, are these gonna maintain our goals? Do we need another year to reach these? So that there's allocations built into the budget for that. Or develop new ones in anticipation for the coming year after that, so that the budget can be built with that in mind. Uh, we're getting better about it as a state, but OSBA used to be invited to lots and lots of August board retreats to set goals. And budgets are already set. And then it's a frustrating experience, because we've set these goals, but there's no money to do anything with it. Not that there's much money anyway, but at least if the superintendent, in developing the budget priorities for the years, knows where the district, where the board wants to take the district, those little teeny-tiny bits of discretionary money can be focused towards meeting your goals, if you do it before you set the budget. So we put that in here. Review, modify if needed, goals next year prior to the budget cycle. How about this one? This one's always tricky.
Decisions on complaints?
Makes decisions on complaints about school district operations or personnel?
I answered that one wrong.
Wasn't the way I said operations or personnel?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, it's the superintendent. So, um, here's a little video. Oh, the sound's not gonna work. All right. So Andy is doing an investigation on a complaint, and he's taking his investigation to the superintendent. Oh, yeah, we're gonna turn the sound up, that's right. You haven't missed much yet. Thanks, Dan.
Yes?
Dr. Wilson, Andy Redd is here to speak.
Andy is a board member.
Send him in, please.
Dr. Wilson?
Hey, Andy, what's your doing today?
Well, I have a pretty serious situation to discuss with you.
Oh, let's hear it.
Clarence Hopgood talked to me last Sunday after Sunday school. He told me his daughter's bus driver is, well, he's a reckless driver. He's very concerned about his children's safety. Seemed pretty upset.
I wonder who the driver is?
Rusty Simpson.
I'll call our transportation supervisor and ask him to investigate this situation right away.
That won't be necessary. I've already done it.
Were you?
Well, on Monday, I started my investigation. Followed the driver for three days and documented everything.
Didn't he have any idea you were following him around?
No, oh, no, I was very careful. On Monday, I used my daughter's little import job to follow him. And then on Tuesday, I borrowed my Selvin's pickup truck. Wednesday, I used the church van to follow him. There's no way he suspected it then.
Well, Andy, don't you, uh-
Now, in my investigation, I clocked that he was speeding twenty-three times. Yeah, twenty-three. On Monday, he hit a curb so hard it knocked several of the children right out of their seats. Tuesday, he shot by the Curvy House. Even though he could see poor little Harold was chasing after the bus. It's all documented, right there.
Wow.
I bet you wish you had more board members like me. I take my responsibilities seriously.
That's a cringe word.
I'm like-
That smile is really cute at the end, though.
He's cute.
He's so proud of himself. Andy Redd. We have a whole series of Andy videos. So, observations? You're all laughing, grabbing your head.
Well, the superintendent seems-
Universal sign of distress. He seemed fine about the complaint part, but then it was the, you know, when it kept going, that was the thing. Yeah, when he took it upon himself to investigate. Yeah. Yeah. I remember a board member in Idaho took her clipboard to a fair, started, yeah, pulling people to do this kind of stuff. I heard a board member in Oregon sadly pulling kids out of class and asking them what they thought their electives should be. Yeah, uh-huh. I saw that look, Dan. I looked her right in the face and said, "It's not your job."
Yeah, there you go.
She didn't care, she didn't listen to me. So, we are used to, in the United States, a representational form of government. We elect people to be our problem solvers in various forms of government. We have city councils, we have county commissions, we have state legislatures, we've got Congress. And depending on where a problem resides for us as a citizen, we are used to, in the United States, being able to email, pick up our phone, send text message, whatever, to our elected official and have them fix the problem for us. And that gets, that system is well ingrained. People see you the same way. You're elected. They want you to fix their problems in your jurisdiction area, which is the school district. What they don't understand, what distinguishes you from all of those other, well, maybe not city council, but all of those other entities, the county, the state, and Congress, is that you are also expected to serve in a judicial role. And they're not. Congress sometimes will hold hearings on different things. But you have to, at some point in time, perhaps, depending on the situation, serve as the Supreme Court of the Silver Falls School District or the appellate court of the Silver Falls School District, if somebody wants to appeal. So in your policy KL, your public complaints, the board doesn't get involved before. So you, everything, you have a complaint, and it's gonna be referred to the proper administrative processes. You guys are not administrative. You're not management. You guys are governance. Any complaint's gonna be referred to the proper administrative process before any investigation, thank you very much, Andy, or action by the board. So you don't get involved at that level. You have this procedure. Step one, if I'm unhappy with a bus driver, and I'm a parent, and I think that they're speeding, I need to go to the bus stop, when the bus driver pulls up, say, "Hey, I'm worried. You know, can you please pay attention to the speed limit? I'm a little worried about my children arriving to school safely or getting home from school safely." And have that conversation directly with the bus driver. And if I feel like the bus driver has blown me off, has treated me disrespectfully, doesn't care about my concerns, then I take it to the bus driver's supervisor. As a parent, I'm concerned. Please take care of my children. That's, you know, that's step one, right? Step two is to go to the supervisor. And then if the supervisor doesn't resolve the situation, or I feel like that there's not, you know, progress being made, or I feel, I see the bus is still speeding, or whatever the case is, that it's unresolved. I'm the parent here, and I've talked to the supervisor, and I'm not seeing any satisfaction, then I, according to this, I take it to the superintendent. At that point, then the superintendent does his job. He investigates, he does whatever he needs to do, and he makes a decision about the situation, and he gives his findings to me. I'm the complainant, right? He gives me his findings. The decision's been made. Whatever the decision is, the decision has been made. So the answer on the form is S. The superintendent makes the decisions. Where the board comes in is if I was that parent and I didn't like that decision, I can appeal it to the board. And at that point, then you become an appellate body. You become a court. You become a judge, the seven of you. And you hear the case on appeal. And if that ever happens to you, you immediately get legal counsel to guide you through that process. Do not ever do an appeal without legal guidance. But because you are acting as a judicial body, you have to always protect that role, because you never know when an individual approaches you and they're unhappy with some aspect of the district that they want some resolve on. You never know if it's ever gonna be appealed to you. So you have to stay out of complaints. You can't fulfill that expectation of, uh, of the American citizens who are so used to calling their elected official to fix things for them. You can't fulfill that role, because you have to fulfill the judge role. And anybody that understands the legal system in the United States knows that they can't go to a judge anytime they want to have a conversation with a judge about some case that's pending for the court. They have to follow the rules of engagement with judges. But they just don't know that that's part of your job. They don't understand it. So, um, you have to help them understand that. So that when they approach you with their concerns, because they will, if they haven't already, Lori and Janet, they will. And, um, you have to help them understand that it is in their best interest to not talk to you individually about their concerns. Um, because it could then create a situation where some could look at you as if you were biased, that you had too much information the other board members did not have, that did not come to you through proper channels. And, um, and so that could create a, uh, oh, a hardship, if you will, for the board if you've had too many conversations and they don't understand that. So you have to help them understand that. You also have to help them understand that you trust this system, that the district will take their complaints seriously, that they will act on them and trust that system. And if you, as individual board members, don't trust that system, then you need to sit down and have a conversation with your superintendent about where that lack of trust lies and see if you can't resolve that. Um, so that you can trust the system, because you're gonna ask everybody else to trust this system. And then refer them back to this policy, so that they know what to do and how to handle and get resolved, um, to their problem. And so, I recommend to boards, yes, there's a lot of policies, and we've seen a few tonight, and we're gonna see a few more. And there's no way board members can know all these policies. You should be very familiar with any in the B section, because they're all about board work. And you should memorize this one. Or at least memorize the intent and the, and the process. The only time the board is the, making a decision on a complaint, um, body where you're the first, first decision-making, and it's not the superintendent making the decision, is if the complaint's about the superintendent, or the complaint's about the board or a member of the board. Then steps one through three are bypassed. Um, and then that's when you would make a decision. But the question was worded on operations or personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because that's his responsibility, if it, if it rose that far.
So is this different than, um, an expulsion?
Yes, this is different than an expulsion. Yes, this is different.
This is different from expulsion.
This is different from expulsion.
I was just gonna, I was thinking of the expulsion component as well.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, they, generally, depending on your agreed-upon processes. But generally, an expulsion, at least it always was in Reynolds, where I was on the board, and it is in a lot of states, that decision is made by the superintendent as well, whether or not to expel a child. Unless, I mean, that decision is made, but the parents can always appeal it to the board.
Right, right.
And, um, and then there's different processes involved from appealing a complaint decision to appealing an expulsion decision. At any time you were called upon to do that, you would probably want some legal advice, um, to guide you. I would recommend it anyway, that you get some legal advice to guide you.
What advice do you have for what constitutes a complaint versus what constitutes general grousing?
Just gonna ask that too.
The grocery store aisle.
Yes.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
If they expect the district to actually take some kind of an action, like they want, they, they want that bus driver disciplined. They, you know, they want that bus driver fired. They want some actions, actual, specific action taken, then, then I think then they need to follow the complaint process. If they're just saying, "God, I wish that they, I wish they had longer recesses." Or, you know, "I wish they'd start school later." I mean, just kind of, just the general grousing, but they're not really truly expecting some specific action to be taken. That's kind of how I distinguish it. Uh, but sometimes it's hard to say, Dan.
I think sometimes, uh, one, you have to be able to kind of be able to really just be direct with people and go, "I need to know if you are just venting for me to listen to you, or you're expecting me to do something." And that's sometimes hard in those awkward situations where you didn't see the, it coming. But just being able to be, stand on your own two feet and go, "I need to know if this is just you venting because we know each other, or if you're expecting to see action as a board member."
Thank you. Very good distinction.
Excellent point.
I think the other place to buy time, because I always find time is my friend, is, you know, maybe it's a situation where you're not quite sure who to direct. You can tell that this is not just grousing, this is, "I'm, I'm upset and I'm complaining." Uh, just buying yourself some time of like, "I want to get you to the right person. Can you, can I get back to you on this?" And call one of us.
Yes.
Uh, to where we can help you, uh, say, "This is the person." For instance, you know, our bus drivers are not our employees. I would not send a parent to a bus stop. I would, I would probably work out a, a situation, because it's a unique relationship, to be able to resolve that matter at the lowest level. But honoring that we have contracts that are different with our drivers than-
Good point.
Than with our teachers.
Right. Very good point.
So I think you, you know, sometimes it's easy to know, "I know, have you talked to the teacher yet?" But I think sometimes it's like, "Let me get back to you. I'm gonna talk to about, because I really want to help you with this, and I want to put you in touch with the right person."
I think I have said those exact words.
It would need to set a moment ago, but have you talked to the teacher? That should just be, one of your- That should just be, one of your talking points you're always using, have you talked to so-and-so?
Yep. Absolutely. And I usually also encourage boards to think about saying to them, if you think this is something that the board needs to hear and you're coming to me because I'm on the board, then the entire board needs to hear it, not just me. I can't be your spokesperson. And there's a process for that. And our process is identified in our policy KL, and it starts with talking to the teacher.
Right.
You know, and redirecting them back to where they can get resolved at the lowest level. And to get them away from thinking you are their personal representative and you are going to fix this for them.
And that comes up a lot, and that's what I commonly say, if you really want the board to know this, you need to deliver that information to everyone.
And there's a process for that because your public policy con, uh, policy, your, your, policy for public comment does not allow for complaints to be brought at a board meeting. So they can't show up at a board meeting and think that they can bring their complaint forward because your, um, policy BDTH doesn't allow for that.
Okay.
So they have to do this. They have to do this. So I, I say that to them to say, if you're coming to talk to me just because I'm on the board and you want me to fix this for you, then you need to know that, that if you think the board needs to address it, the entire board needs to hear it and there's a process and this is our process. And, um, but they can't come and talk about complaints at a board meeting.
And because we use a lot of words, so when you say complaint, are you talking about a specific complaint about a person or personnel?
Usually about a person.
I mean, because I, I could consider that, you know, uh, I've seen board, plenty of board, uh, meetings where someone expresses a concern. I wouldn't call it a complaint, but unhappy about something.
Yeah. I think you want, you wanna try and, uh, keep that from happening as much as possible. You want the public input from your, at your meetings to be saying, okay, you're gonna vote on this policy tonight. I'd like to give you some input on your policy. Or you're gonna be talking about the price of school lunches. Um, it's on your agenda to be talking about, you know, what the price is at, and we wanna talk to you about that. Um, and try and keep the public comments at your board meetings to be about what truly is board work and about that. Or, or to tell you what they would wish for the future. It's like, have you guys ever considered having a uniform policy and every kid comes to school dressed the same? Or have you guys ever considered, um, the, the increasing arts education and what you're offering in arts education? You know, to bring you like those kinds of things. But if they wanna come to you and say, I don't like how you're running the football program. Why are these kids out here practicing in the hot sun? You know, it's eighty-two degrees outside. You know, aren't you worried about heat stroke or heat exhaustion? You don't want those kinds of things coming to your board meeting. Those kinds of things that they're concerned about, they can take that, ask the coach. Why are you holding football session, you know, training sessions in eighty-some degree weather? Those, you know, go talk to the coach. Don't bring that to the board. Does that help, Dan?
Hmm.
Yeah. This one always is difficult because as soon as you put on your board member hat on July 1st, when you take the oath, you are immediately seen differently in the community.
Oh, before that.
Immediately, yeah. I know. I, I got appointed in April and my next-door neighbor, who was a teacher that I had known for, well, two doors over, that I'd known for forever, comes up to me and starts talking to me about some collective bargaining language because they were in the process of bargaining, but I had just been sworn in. And I'm like, I was totally confused.
Well, there's, there's also,
But I was on board now.
There's also a sticky part when you have children in the district.
Yes, yes.
And you clearly have to say, I have my parent hat on.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
Or I have my board member hat on, you know, and it, it, it can get very, very sticky and, um, misconstrued and,
You have to remind them all the time.
Let's just say that. So, um, it's very important if you have children in the district to make sure that it's very clear.
Yeah, absolutely.
That I'm here as a parent. If you send an email, this is my parent hat, literally type it out.
Yeah.
Um, because, yeah.
You're absolutely right, cause I had a,
It's really hard.
I had a complaint, I, board member Renee, had a complaint against one of my, my daughter's teachers. And I approached her and I said, I think we need to have a conversation.
Right.
Because I'm, I mean, you upset my daughter.
Right.
You know, and so I was like, we need to have a conversation. I heard later that, that evening, she was like, crying, Renee Sussler was talking to me. And I'm like, oh my God, you know, I'm just Heather's mom, you know? But I'm not just Heather's mom in her mind, I am Renee Sussler, the board member.
And sometimes it doesn't matter.
It is a delicate balance.
And sometimes it doesn't matter how well-intentioned it is. If that person,
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it's, it's really tricky.
It is.
So just be very careful.
When you talk about being elected, one of the, one, already in the short time, one of the funniest things, I was picking up Mexican food, you know, for dinner. And some gentleman tapped me on the shoulder and turned around and goes, are you on school board? And I said, yes. And, and so we talked a little and then he goes, no, I'm really upset, someone took the key, so I can't get into the gym anymore. And I said, you know, I said, policies change a lot. I said, they change, you know, at least once a year. So I said, the best person to talk to is this wonderful new acting superintendent. And I handed it off to you, Dan.
Well, I didn't hear about it, so, yeah.
I remember that's, that's how I kind of, at the time, I thought that was the appropriate thing to do. But it is interesting when you least expect it, somebody will start complaining about something that's,
Yeah, exactly. And so a lot of boards and superintendents have agreements that say, if you hear something like that, um, and it depends on what agreement that you're gonna work out here, that you'll give them a heads up. And then if, if he's giving, if he agrees to that and he's giving seven messages and he knows somebody's trying to play the board. Because if you tell them, hey, this is not the board's role, please go back and follow policy KL. Have you talked to the teacher, you know, or have you talked to the principal or whatever, depending on the situation? And you've done that and you've had that conversation with them and you say, hey, you know, Paul, heads up. You know, this person came up to me and they are upset about whatever. And I talked to him and I told him what to do and they're gonna follow policy KL, but I just wanna let you know. But then Janet also calls him, and then Jennifer calls him, and then Shelley calls him, and then Herb calls him, and Jonathan calls him, and Tom calls him, and he knows this person's really trying to work the system and is not listening to each board member telling this person, hey, we have a process, please, follow the process. And then he knows something's brewing.
I think, can I ask a question of you, but that might be helpful, is I think that, you know, as you act in, in possibly as a parent and board member, I mean, if you get a sense, I mean, it's hard to separate that and it's, you know, um, you know, as my, as a parent who, if people know that I'm a principal or an assistant superintendent, they, and I approach a, one of my kids as teachers, they may, you know, and if I sense that, I would rather go, hey, if, if my role makes you feel uncomfortable, if, you know, you want to have another person there, your principal or, you know, whomever. Um, I think that offer goes a long way to say, hey, and if it, if, because I am, I'm a parent first and foremost, but if my role as a board member causes you any concern, please feel free to, we could have your principal there or what have you. Just to show that extra effort of understanding.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I have actually said those words of, I'm a parent first and foremost. I have children in this district, I'm a parent. I mean, my number one goal is my children.
Yeah.
Nothing else matters. So I have literally said that to people in the district too. But I do like the idea of, um, you know, if this makes you feel uncomfortable, let's invite more people in. And I really like that idea.
Especially if you have no previous experience working with them. If there's somebody that's had your kids, maybe a couple of kids a couple of times, you've got, you, you know it's gonna be okay. But when you, it could be that first time, it's like, hey, and if it makes you feel uncomfortable, let's, who could, who could we bring in to help this go well?
And I, I also, that's a very good point because I think also, um, our town is very tight-knit. And you can know a lot of people. And you're talking and you're having, you know, you're, you're, you know, your, your kids play baseball together and, and I think ninety-nine percent of the time, the intention is to, oh my gosh, how's your kid, you know, how's Joe doing or whatever, you know? And you just get into conversations and, but, um, as a board member, you consciously have to like draw the line. And that's a big learning lesson for being in such a close-knit town and knowing so many peoples and families and, and, yeah. So it's interesting.
It's true.
It's, it's a dynamic that can be very tough.
And it's learned over time. Do you have children in the school?
No.
Do you have, you do?
Yeah.
So you're gonna experience some of what Shelley's talking about.
Yeah.
Renee, how are we doing on time?
We only have a half hour left. So, question number nine, visit schools on announce to observe students learning in classrooms and check on overall staff and student morale. Yes, and this is where I'm gonna show you your policy BG that I talked about with setting the goal collaboratively. So it says visits to schools. When board members, um, when you're going to a school simply because you're a board member, not because you're a parent, not because you're going to some sporting event, not because you're going to some carnival or any other public thing, but you're showing up just because you're a board member, it's the only reason why you're going. You have this policy that it's gonna be done with the full knowledge of the staff, superintendent and principals and other supervisors. They're gonna know you're coming, they're gonna know why you're coming. Um, you aren't gonna just pop into a school and say, hey, I'm school board member, um, Lori McLaughlin, and I'm here to, you know, check, check morale and, uh, student learning. So, yeah, it's a superintendent that can do that.
Okay.
And you can't. Those board members just show up.
Randomly drop.
Just randomly drop into schools simply because you're a school board member. You can't do that per your policy. And then that's, um, you asked about communicating, um, on board, you know, board members with staff and administration. If there's a message that the, the board wants to send to staff or administration, they need to do it through the superintendent.
Sure.
And if there's a message that staff wants the board to know, they need to send that through the superintendent per this policy BG. Now, as an individual, you can have conversations, like Shelley said, you're gonna run into people at the grocery store, you're gonna see them at various events and whatnot, and there's nothing that's gonna stop you from having any kind of personal conversations. But keep in mind that they should not be bypassing the superintendent to try and send a covert message to the board. You know, because they're staff. And you shouldn't try, you shouldn't be bypassing the system and trying to send messages directly to staff with, you know, bypassing the superintendent. So these things can totally be all social. You can also, depending on how you, uh, structure, do you guys have representative schools, so board members represent certain schools?
No.
Okay, well then that is a moot point here. But if you had those kinds of relationships, then you could define what, uh, how you would, what you would say and, uh, kinda how you would communicate, so you have those healthy boundaries if you had those kinds of relationships of representative schools. So this policy guides that. Um, you also have an accompanying policy, I don't think we're gonna get to it tonight, on the individual board members, but, uh, basically says if you want any information, you wanna know something, then you, you ask the superintendent. Cause you, other staff, um, maybe excluding Dan or Debbie, but it kinda depends. But other staff see a request from an individual board member as a mandate and they gotta jump. You know, they don't quite understand, um, so in, for example, when I had my job in Mount Hood Community College, I worked at a college too. Um, I, I needed some information on, from actually all of the area, school districts, um, food service programs. They're like free and reduced lunch kind of, kind of information that I needed. So even in that instance, when it was totally job-related, I let my superintendent know, hey, I'm gonna be contacting so-and-so and asking for this information. I wasn't asking it because I was on the board. I was asking it of every school district in the area, but I still just gave my superintendent a heads up. Um, but it was a little different. But if you want information simply because you're on the board, this is the guy you ask.
Yeah, and, and I think that's important to note too, because Dan's been our person and, um, but Dan is no longer our person.
Right.
And, and, and like we had an extraordinary opportunity to get to know you.
Right.
But now that's kind of like, we go through you.
Yep.
Paul's your person now.
Superintendent.
Yeah.
So according to this policy, if I wanted to visit the schools, are you saying that you still wanna have an administrator accompany?
No, that's not what that's saying.
The board member? Or how do you feel? Because I, I'd like to just visit the schools just to get a feel for them, not to put anyone in a corner and have any,
Have anybody feel uncomfortable?
No, I just wanna get a feel for the school. Oh, wow, you do this, you know, and so, but I know I'd still have to go through you. May I have your permission to do so?
You, you have him arrange it is what you do.
Good, okay.
So at least that's how it worked in Reynolds and you gotta speak your preference, but if we wanted to go visit a school, the superintendent set it up. Is that what, what you prefer?
Yeah, you would call Debbie. And Debbie would say, like, you know, Lori wants to go to the school visit, and I would say, oh, great. I'm, I'm going out there tomorrow, see if she can go tomorrow.
Okay, very good.
Or if I'm gonna be out of town for five days, I'll say, hey, you know, then I'll just arrange it.
Oh, very good, okay.
And Debbie would give the school a heads up that Lori's gonna be here on this date at this time. Please make sure she, she sees the following.
Oh, okay.
Most of the time, they love having board members in their buildings. And they love to show off what's happening and they're very proud to take you around.
Yeah.
It's just doing it through the proper, yeah, channel, so you don't surprise somebody and show up and they've got some huge discipline thing going on that, you know, you weren't aware of and now they're feeling torn. I gotta, ah, I had to deal with this, now I got a board member on my doorstep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Right.
I'd look at that as an opportunity for us both to get in the school.
Yeah, it's great to visit schools, just don't drop it. There you go. That's just all, I mean, that's just all, because everyone sees you differently.
That's true.
And that goes with being a parent.
Yep.
In the school. It's, you, you just be careful, you know, walk in and,
I didn't let him off the hook, though, like you, Shelley, I didn't let him off the hook. I'm still Heather and Katie's mom by golly and, you know, I did the proper processes.
Right.
You know, I sign in, I follow all the same rules as anybody else.
Right.
You know?
It's also really good when they see us together.
Yes.
Right.
Oh, okay.
It does.
Yeah, it's very good.
They see us as a family.
This one always takes a long time, uh, but this one, number 10, reducing teacher lunch breaks. What'd you write down? We'll do this one, I'll just answer this one really quick. Okay, it really depends on whether or not it's a collective bargaining.
It didn't say collective bargaining in there.
So it depends on if it's a bargainable element, um, or if it's not. So if you have a bargained agreement for thirty minutes and you've been giving them forty and then you need to drop it back down, he can do that. But if you have bargained forty-minute lunches and you wanna drop it down to thirty-six, then it's, then it's the board's responsibility. And you have to take it back and it's a bargaining, it's one of those articles that you, approving an overnight trip for the drama class. Okay, what if it's an out-of-state trip?
It says out-of-state.
Uh, it says overnight and then the other is out-of-state. So your policy actually says, you have a policy IICA about field trips. You said that if they involve travel, they may be authorized by the superintendent. And then down at the bottom, any first-time out-of-state travel must have board approval. Once you've approved it, you don't have to approve it again. If it's international travel, then it has to have board approval. So this is different in every single district because every single district decides. So like Rainier, for example, that has to go over the bridge and into Washington to get to I-5, yeah, they don't approve over, out-of-state travel, right? Cause they're going out of state every time they take the bus over the bridge. Changing the high school mascot, your favorite question when we asked this at the beginning.
Um, yeah, I thought you, sorry, I really did.
I'm assuming that you have experience.
So I'm gonna ask a second question. Do you have a policy about the changing of the high school mascot?
We do.
You do?
We do. We do have a policy.
About the changing of the high school mascot or about how the high school mascot will be used?
I think we've had this discussion before.
Well, I didn't find it. If you have it, then somebody tell me what it is. Because we usually use this fictitious, fictitious situation to say, where you don't have policy, then the then the superintendent has the right to act. If you don't have policy.
So, you know what, we were talking about, um, naming schools.
Yeah.
If we needed to, if we built a new school or such.
Yeah.
We were talking about, okay, how do we name the school, what's the policy that we have, do we name it, you know, how do we do that? And there is a policy about naming schools.
Yes.
So, yeah, and we did have a discussion.
And state law says the school board is responsible for how the mascot will be used.
Okay.
But not what the mascot will be named.
Well, this needs to be a high priority.
And we do this just to create, and I'm trying to rush is all, I'm trying to get through, cause I wanna answer the rest of the things on there. But this would, you don't have a policy about the naming of the mascot.
So it would be superintendent.
So it would go to the superintendent, because there's no policy.
Right.
But then he would bring it to you. But then, then you read that. You'd also don't have this policy, which is BFE. Um, it's not required policy. You don't have that one either.
No.
That, that gives him the right to act. So basically, to summarize, you guys govern by setting the direction. He manages the shift to get you to where you wanna go, or the school bus to where you wanna go. And then those things that I talked about that are on page five, um, all of these different pieces here, he does one aspect of work, and you do the other aspect of work, um, that are listed on these pages. Uh, and I want to get, and we're not gonna have time to get to the individual board member stuff, we've got 15 minutes left. Debbie said when I arrived, hey, he's really good at ending right at eight o'clock. She's like, well, I don't wanna make enemies, especially the first time I meet you.
You mentioned, you mentioned superintendent evaluation.
I did, we're not.
Would you wanna do that instead?
It takes more than 15 minutes.
Okay, cause I'm happy to remove some of mine if that's more important.
And, and superintendent evaluation is part of the package that we get with, um, our,
With the transition?
Superintendent search, yeah.
Well, with the full search you do, but I don't know that you do with the interim search. I'll have to clarify that.
He said that we would probably get that in bend, but I don't know when that would be, so.
Okay, so generally, the interim search just comes with, here you go, you've got a superintendent now. Um, the full search has 12 hours of transition planning, like that's what I was doing in Roseburg on Friday. I was giving, and then when I go back to Roseburg, cause we don't do 12 hours in a day, then we're nailing down the superintendent evaluation. But you can certainly take and read this, and there's really good information in there.
Got it.
Um, and I can come back anytime that you want me to come back. So in your booklet is a lot of, um, additional information that I wanna point out. So this Ask OSBA is basically how to use our website. Uh, this is just a screenshot of our website, but we have this feature, it's highlighted right here. It's called Ask OSBA. If you click on that, then you can search what questions might have already been asked. Um, and see if the, your, you know, if your question is similar, or you have something else. Or you can use this search bar up here, is the best feature of our website. Whatever you wanna look up, just type it into there, our webs, our website is so darn deep. Uh, because it's years and years and years in the making. So just encourage you to go there. We wanted to talk about meetings. So here on page seven, we wanna talk about the kinds of meetings. According to state law, you have a regular meeting and you have a special meeting. Those are the two kinds of meetings that you have. Tonight's a special meeting. We have all kinds of substitute names, like work session or whatever, for the special meeting. But according to state law, here on page seven, you have these. And this is generally, it's, generally it's once a month. Um, and in July, at your organizational meeting, you state the date, you know, it's gonna be on the second Tuesdays at 7:30 in the district office. Or whatever it is. And this is where most of your formal work takes place. And a special meeting is anything that's not the regular meeting. It's just anything that's not the regular meeting. So all of those meetings you had to hire Paul, those are all special meetings. You know, until the monthly business meeting. Executive sessions you asked about, next page over on page eight. An executive session is an agenda item. And it can be an agenda item of either a regular monthly business meeting, or it can be an agenda item in a special business meeting. It can be the single agenda item if, for, if your meeting's simply to have an executive session conversation. It's still a special meeting of the board, and your only item on the agenda is an executive session. So it can be a part of either, it can kind of be a standalone, kind of, but it's not, it's still just a special meeting. There are 10 reasons that you can go into executive session. We're gonna have to update this booklet, because some things changed in the law recently around executive sessions. It just happened in this last legislative session. It's really minute. But on the item that says here, number 10, to review student medical and educational program records, there's some minor change to that language in the law now of why you could go into executive session. That number 10 is probably the least reused reason a board ever goes into executive session. So it's not likely that it's gonna impact you much at all, cause rarely do you ever need to look at an individual student's records. Um, unless it's, has something to do with the considering the expulsion.
So I have a question. You have to state the, the ORS number, you have to state the statute.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to state a topic?
No.
By law?
No. So you would read this, so for example, you don't, um, you used somebody, when I didn't write it down intentionally, but when I was taking these suggestions, you said adjourn into executive session, you're not adjourning the meeting. Is this an element within the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So you were moving into executive session.
Ooh.
And it doesn't take a motion, the, it's just an item on your agenda. You don't have motions for every item on your agenda. So you just, the, the board chair just declares, the board will now move into executive session per ORS one, I'm looking at number one here. Per ORS 192 dot 660 subsection 2A, you probably did this one recently, to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. That's all you have to say.
Okay.
And then either you ask everybody to leave your room and you close the doors, or you get up and you go into another room and close the doors, whatever process works for you. You talk about that and only that, and then you don't vote. Now, if you have two reasons to go into executive session, you could state both of them at the same time. You know, per ORS 192 dot 660, whatever, and then whatever. And then once you get in there, those are the only things that you talk about.
Is there, do you need to record minutes or have a recording of executive session?
You have to have minutes, um, so talking about public records again.
Mm-hmm.
They have to be similar in substance and style to your regular board meeting agendas.
Okay.
They are not shared, they are not even voted on, um, by the board at future meetings. But they are kept, and they are only ever released if there's a legal reason to release them. So like the public, who have a public records request, they can't request executive session minutes.
Okay.
You know, hey, I wanna see the executive session minutes. Sorry, no, you can't, can't do that.
Okay.
But if there's a legal reason, a judge would tell you.
Couple of questions. One, on that, on that last note, so for instance, if an individual board member wanted to request executive session minutes, they, would, what would the answer be to that?
No.
Okay. And second question regarding what Shelley asked around, you know, stating the reason why. You know, uh, so for instance, in the hiring of a public official, where anybody who's paying attention probably knows what it's about, probably not necessary to, to add that. If it's something that, you know, curiosity might be out there, would there be any reason why the board might want to add some, we're talking about, you know,
We're talking about Paul Peterson, whether we're gonna hire him or not?
No, I'm thinking more along the line of like six.
Superintendent hire something.
Like six, so you've got, you're, you're, you're meeting with your attorney. I'm trying to think of what we might add to that that might say regarding a,
So we, we had a teacher that was arrested in Reynolds when I worked there. He was, he, he came in, um, thankfully, the police were kind enough to call first and say, we wanna come in and arrest this teacher. And they worked with us, and we said, hey, can you just not walk into the high school where there's like thousands of students and arrest him during the middle of the day? Can you allow us to bring him to the district office, and we'll get a substitute into the room, you can come down to the district office and arrest him there? And so they said, yes, they would work with us, you know, didn't wanna disrupt the learning environment. And so we got it, we heard about this after the fact. We didn't know this before the fact. But, so they got a substitute into his classroom, and they just told him, hey, they, they wanna see you down at the district office to the teacher. He didn't know why, he didn't know what was up, and so he went down to the district office, and he was arrested. Okay, that makes news, right? When a teacher gets arrested, everybody knows that stuff. We met in executive session on number six, um, in respect to, with our lawyer, you know, because like, what's gonna happen with this now? And so we were meeting with, um, our legal counsels, you know, uh, current litigation, or are we likely to be sued? Um, in this instance, it would, the accusation against the teacher was childhood sexual abuse. And so that was the accusation. The parents went to the police, the police were just doing their job. But we never named that teacher, even though everybody knew who had gotten arrested. We didn't name it. We were in executive session per this topic.
I mean, you can't name the teacher anyways.
Exactly.
But you could, you could, I mean, like, like for example, number one, to consider the employment of a public officer, superintendent, staff member, individual agent, you could put, or, or is it, you know, if you put superintendent hire?
Yeah, which is really the only time a board would.
Which is, but what if he says no? Right, exactly. So you don't, so that's why I was asking if it's legal, or if it's, if we have to do it, or we don't have to.
No, you don't, you don't have to do it, and it's not advisable.
I just wanna make it clear to our community members.
Yes.
On some, some community members.
It's not advisable. So Oregon Public Meeting Law started, um, as a result of Watergate, and in a lot of states adopted, um, this kind of transparency model. Where they said, we're gonna expose government's processes to the light of day, and we're gonna let everybody see um, political subdivisions, of which you are, the state of Oregon, we're gonna let everybody see how they do their work. But we recognize there's a few instances where there needs to be some privacy. And so these are the 10 reasons that the state of Oregon recognizes that you might need to have some privacy to have some conversations. Other than that, everything else that you do can be witnessed by others.
Um, one other quick question associated with what Shelley's asking. I, I got different information about materials introduced into executive session, that those are public records and could be requested? Or is that not true? You said the minutes couldn't be, but if you're materials that are part of.
So there are some records that are protected. Certain records are not just automatically releasable, like personnel records.
Sure, sure.
Um, student employment record, I mean, it's not employment, but student records are not. Um, and there's a thing called FERPA that you also have to consider. So, um, so it would depend on what the record was
Okay.
that was introduced in executive session, whether it's, um, public or whether it is protected.
But just by virtue of being in executive session doesn't protect it immediately?
No, not necessarily. It depends on what kind of record is.
Okay, nope, that's consistent with what I understood.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so, um, so moving into executive session is just that. It's just stating it and going in is moving into it. Kinds of meetings are regular or special, they all have agenda items. You know, tonight's agenda was this.
And I have another question, really quick.
And public records are anything that's used, so like this booklet is now a public record.
Right.
And anybody who wants to see it could, or, um, the quizzes or any of those things, they're all public records.
And when you go into executive session, you have to stay on topic.
Yes, you cannot talk about anything else but that.
Great.
Yeah.
Good clarity.
Yep, you can only talk about that thing, and it's really easy to slip and go, oh, by the way. Nope, no, oh, by the ways.
Right.
And it's really, um, incumbent on the chair, the next page, to keep the executive session in order. Um, you know, they keep it running, keep it on track, don't let people stray. You know, the chair is really the person that's responsible for presiding over meetings and maintaining the order in the meetings. And they need to know that. And if somebody starts to slip off track, ah, Renee, we're not going there. We can talk about that in here. Um, so you talked a little bit about public records, what is one, how to preserve a record. So basically, a record is anything that is used by the, uh, public, uh, body. So like in your board meetings, your notes that you take technically are public records. Um, and so sometimes what some districts do is they just give them to the board secretary at the end of the meeting, and then they become a part of the record for that meeting, that she just saves them in the file, you know, staples them together or whatever. And if they wanna keep copies of them for their own self, she'll make a photocopy of them and take, take them home, and then she has the, she has the record now preserved, cause people can obviously see that you guys are writing stuff down, and they might be curious, what are they writing down? That is considered a public record.
Yeah, I know that she can do that.
So she can just make photocopies of it, then she has the record in her file for the meeting, and someone says, hey, I saw that Janet was taking a lot of notes during that training session with Renee, what did she write down? Janet, you'd have a, you'd have a copy of it. So, um, and then they're, they have to be retained on a schedule. Can't write very well, but, um, and different records are retained for a different length of time. And so they, that's, that's a huge part of Debbie's job, is to understand what records get, you know, preserved and for how long and where, and what, in what manner. So just be cognizant that anything that, uh, you communicate in aspect of being on the board is considered a public record. They already know that about a lot of the stuff that they do on a day-to-day basis in their jobs, they already know all about, um, public records. So this is more about you as a board. Email is on page 10. Any email that you send as a school board member is a public record. And therefore, we recommend that you always use a district website email address for any board communications, because then it can be retained on the district server and for the district's retention records, um, and the state's requirements for those. Um, anymore, OSBA is recommending that we kinda go old-school on, uh, communications to the board. So before email was a thing, um, before it existed, people actually had to write letters on paper, and then they would like mail them to the school district and say to the school board. I got letters like that before email was a thing. You know, to the school, Reynolds School Board, and there would be the letter that that person wanted to share with the board. So we're recommending in the like, in, because of public records, and because a lot of people don't understand the role of the board, that the district have available on its website, one email address, say for example, it says schoolboard@silverfalls.k12, whatever your syntax is. And that that letter be received at the district office, goes to somebody like Debbie, just like an old-fashioned letter would have been mailed and opened at the district office, oh, it's for the school board. Then somebody like Debbie is like that gatekeeper for that communication, as if it was old-school, can then, if it's truly board business, pass it along to the board. Ninety percent of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time, those letters are really about district business. And then she can pass that along to whomever is responsible to take care of it. Superintendent, the high school principal, the football coach, cause they're complaining about the kids out there practicing in the sun, and they think that's board work. So we're recommending anymore at OSBA that there be a single email address on your website to email the school board. Take your individual email addresses off of the website. Um, go old-school, so that they communicate to the entire school board, so that cherry-picking which board member to email to. Takes the responsibility of replying to emails, um, away from like the chairman or whatever. It goes through the same filter that old-fashioned mail ever went through, which was the paper letter that would be opened by the board secretary and addressed. Keep your district email addresses, so they can communicate with you, like, hey, are you available for a training on August 19th? Those kinds of, kinds of things, when he sends out any reports to the board or whatever, are your communication protocols. But if people wanna talk to the board, they need to talk to the entire board, not to individual members of the board. And they can do that through that email address. So that's a recommendation that we're getting, and then it allows that public record to be preserved. Um, because then the district has that email inside of its system and on its server, and it can be maintained as a public record, learn.
How long, what shelf-like do public records have? I mean, once it's sent, is it just forever, or is it, is it seven? I mean, once it's sent, is it just forever or is there, is it seven years or five?
There's a schedule and I don't know it.
Oh, okay.
And it, and it varies by document, by type of document. The schedules vary, like board minutes have to be kept to perpetuity. You got to keep board, or at least 99 years. If it's not perpetuity, it's 99 years. So there, there, records change, it depends on what it is, how long it's preserved and how it's preserved, I mean, in what, like if it's in a lockbox, like minutes, or if it's just in a filing cabinet somewhere. You know, so there's, there's just different.
Which just varies, it just depends on.
It varies on the records, it varies on the records. Yeah, so we talked about that. We talked about this.
Before we move on, I would just like to express that I would very much like us to consider that system of everything going through the board secretary.
It's highly recommended anymore to go that route, just, you know, single email, school board add, whatever.
Well, we have a big problem with responding. I think, and timely responding. And that would be very nice if we had a professional that was doing that.
Where I'm sitting behind my email all day long for advice.
Well.
I mean, giving you half an hour's advice.
And like I said, most of the time it's district business and they don't know that. The people emailing don't know that and so they think they need to go to the school board. And then you can take care of it in a more timely fashion. It's something to consider.
Something to think about.
Yeah. Parliamentary procedure is a big topic. Over time.
Can you direct us to the video?
Jurassic Parliament. Has a website presence, Debbie knows how to access Jurassic Parliament. They have got a ton of resources out there. Happy to, happy to answer any questions, if you guys want to stay late, about particular aspects of Parli Pro if you want, I don't care. The rest of this book, after email, is ethics, just some high level information on ethics. Common issues that boards face and where you might find some solutions to that. Public comments, some recommendations around that. And then inside this Board Superintendent Working Agreement, there's actually this one pager I wanted you guys to consider as your Board Superintendent Operating Agreement. On this, take a copy and pass it around, I want to keep one. So on here are some high level agreements around your collaborative governance process, some high level agreements around communications. And then some specific expectations over here that you could get some suggestions for from these lines. Page 15 would be some of the board's expectations of the soup. Now I still have typo on here, I thought we got this fixed. So I just, I, I thought we had gotten it fixed, I thought I had pointed it out, but I must have copied an old file. The superintendent's expectations of the board are on this side, not his expectations of himself. And so we recommend about three in any given year that the board would have of the superintendent, but we left space for five if you just can't decide. They're all really good, but prioritize for this year with Paul, what you would want your expectations for him for this year as your interim. And then whatever number you choose, he gets to choose a corresponding equal number of expectations of you. And there's a list of suggestions for him on this page. Because this document is so newly developed, it hasn't gotten inserted into the book yet. And I need to fix the typo that I thought I fixed. So anyway, this is something that we would like you to consider as an operating agreement with Paul, if he likes it, if you like it. If it'll meet your needs for this year to have that. And then if it does, it could be an element of your superintendent evaluation, it could be a piece of criteria. The last part of the book is an article, it's about a hospital board, but it's really good information on that difference between governance and management, this matter of perspective. It's several pages long. We have an advertisement about OSBA's policy services, you guys did that not too long ago on my recommendation. You went through that process in 2017, I believe. And then the last page talks about some recommendations, if you have a crisis and you need to deal with some communications, excuse me, around that. Some legal tips, some media tips, some social media tips, if you have some kind of, it's on the back, inside back cover. So that's what's there in the booklet. Please fill this out. And can I answer any other specific questions? And then we'll have to talk about rescheduling, the finish of this and the other pieces of information we didn't get to.
I'm wondering what recommendation you have for how we proceed with this.
I was just about to say, I really believe we should have that second training session or second session together. And that ought to be, this ought to be one of the things that we accomplish.
Yep.
As well as I think maybe even a few more specific decisions or opportunities to make decisions about protocols. Like this suggestion that you made about the school board singular email address. I saw some heads nodding, you might want to get to a decision on that, there might be some other protocols that.
Yeah, that we didn't get to.
That we didn't get to that we ought to have covered.
I know, we're out of time.
I think there also needs to be an expansion on public records. Because I don't think board members, I learned a lot in Bend. There was a significant amount of seminars on that and the legalities behind it. And I didn't know any of that. And so I think that, you know, when you become a public official, you can assume that you can do these things or you can't do these things, you're like, well, this is the best judgment, probably shouldn't do this or do this. But it needs to be very clear on, you know, how that works, especially now that we have so much media and such. So, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be good.
Sure.
Do you happen to know when the Falcon Convention Agenda will come up? Because there are probably some, these are good sessions that we could.
That's true.
I thought it was, I thought most of it was out there, let me go see.
So do we want to talk about a date now?
Oh, for the next, here, okay.
What are the dates of the roundtables?
Yes, we do. It is November 14th to the 17th. So I have it up there on the website, so this is our, it's at the Marriott as usual. This is important. Yeah. So the, the pre-conference is on Thursday, November 14th and it's about trauma-engaged practice, the board's role around that. Alaska is way ahead of us on the game and so I've asked my colleagues from the Alaska Association of School Boards to come down and lead a session, it's really powerful stuff. I learned it when I was in Juneau a little over a year ago. So it's an additional price and an additional application. So the mobile app, I see what you're talking about, the agenda. So, yeah. You have to actually get registered, be registered for the conference to see the mobile app. And the mobile app is where we have the whole schedule.
Has registration opened yet?
Yeah, it's open.
Oh, shoot, okay.
The hotels aren't open yet, but the scheduling. So for example, on Friday, which is the first full day of convention, once you get registered, then you can see all of this stuff that's in here. The general session, here in all of these different colors at 11:00 AM are the workshops for that time slot. So once you're registered, you can access this either on your mobile device through the app or on the website like this. So. So, yeah, so it's there.
Is it something, for example, it's like on Robert's rules or part of the procedures?
So the problem with convention is convention really isn't about nuts and bolts of board work. Convention is really about school districts sharing great practices with each other. Look what we did to increase our attendance, look what we did to improve our graduation rate. And so it's kind of school districts sharing their best practices with each other. The July conference is the nuts and bolts on board work. I did a work session on parliamentary procedure in July. But convention really isn't nuts and bolts of board work. So there isn't one, sorry.
And the block's open September 9th?
Yeah, is that what it said?
That's what I have from the sound.
Lanell. Okay, Lanell?
Lanell.
Sarah?
Lanell, Triselle?
She, she wouldn't know anything about convention.
She responded to.
Well, that was nice of her. She's a great lady, I love her, but.
I meant it just to the general, because I got panicky when I didn't want, I don't want to miss the combinations.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The hostess there, have you signed up for accommodations yet?
Oh, no, no, I can't do that yet, that's fine.
So upcoming events, if we go back over here to. No, it's. Okay, if you don't register in the first five minutes for hotel rooms, you won't get them.
It was so bad.
So, here we go, we've got, so the registration. Okay, we have a, we have a little bit of, oh, here's the hotel and travel, just scroll down, hotels and travel, yes. September 9th, the room block will open at 8:00 AM.
And that's on me.
I do all that, I don't sleep the night before.
No, all of the board secretaries are like this.
Yes, don't call, do it online.
I did last year.
You do? It was worse, it was worse.
And then I had to end up going down to the Marriott myself.
Oh my goodness. It was crazy.
Worked out.
So you're going to show up there at 8:00 AM on the night?
No, I'm in a.
Yeah, I am so sorry, it's so stressful. I am sorry, it is so stressful.
You didn't hear that.
So. In, in July, well, for the July conference, it's sold out before 11:00 AM. I know, it's, and we didn't get there, we weren't there.
No?
No, they didn't put us there.
They were all over, I was like, I'm so sorry.
And mine was good.
Mine was great.
I didn't, yeah, but still not my favorite.
It was cemetery, yeah.
It's actually totally fine.
No, I took my life in my hands.
I know.
And you want to know something, I was there so little.
I know, but still, you want to know something about when I was there.
I know.
Let's talk about a date, her, possibly.
So dates, I can look at dates, my calendar is getting very full. I'm available tomorrow night. I'm just teasing you, I'm just teasing, because that was, that was in May. I'm happy to go, I'm, actually, I just signed up to golf tomorrow night since I didn't have to work. Our ladies club golfs on Tuesday nights.
Nice.
So I sign up when I'm home.
So we did discuss, that the idea came up that we potentially like to have like continuous training throughout the year. You know, we have training now and then maybe training a couple of months down the road or three months and then another training three months and then another training three, you know, just kind of a continue. Instead of just doing it all in August and then not seeing you until next August, just kind of breaking it up and if questions come up or, you know, we can save those questions for, for training for us.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
We just thought it would be a healthy way to, you know, keep up on information that we need to know instead of just calling every, you know, whenever. So we thought it would be healthy as a board and an administration to do that, so.
That is one of your roles, learning together as a board superintendent team.
Right, yeah, and I think it would be healthy, yeah, to do that.
Well, let's get this one, because we know we need a board, a board superintendent operating agreement and facilitation seems to be the easiest way to get to that.
So you guys tell me what you're looking at, because my schedule doesn't, I just need to look at any.
Well, are Monday nights good for most people? I mean, I feel like, I don't know, are Mondays, you know, or Tuesday? Usually that's the first or the third Monday.
So September 30th would be my first available Monday.
Can we work that long with the agreement?
Well, I can come on the 9th, but Debbie was going to be sick, so. I'm available on the 9th.
So the 9th is our, is the regular board meeting?
So September 30th maybe?
On Mondays, if you only wanted a Monday. Because I am in Eastern Oregon on the 16th and I am in Skeptus on the 23rd. And so I get around.
Do we want to try for the 30th?
If you, if you want a Monday only, that's my next available.
Okay, I see.
Do you have any Thursdays available?
9th is the regular board meeting and the 23rd is our work session.
I might have the 12th available, I did have a schedule for Gaston, but the superintendent sent me an email and said they wanted to move it to another date. I told her, okay, here are my dates, but I haven't heard back from her, so that one's tentative. On 19th, I'm in the Dells, the 26th, I could.
So 12th, 26th or 30th are options. Anybody else want to drop?
About 12th, she said that she had to hear back from the superintendent.
Yeah, Gaston, yeah.
Potential options.
Because they asked to move that to another time, so I said, okay, but good luck.
I had jury duty on the 12th.
So that's just probably not going to probably work yet.
30th?
30th works for me.
All right, if everybody's okay with that.
30th works for me.
All right, let's do the 30th.
Sure, it'd be another busy night.
Yeah.
The whole idea about, you know, our August has been so busy, but it gets even busier.
I'd rather do it, I'd rather be more in August.
But we haven't done any, we haven't done any scheduling for the process of our permanent superintendent. So I don't know what Steve Kelly is going to bring to us and say, we have to have these scheduled, so.
He is going to do something.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, when does it start?
When do we, when do we start the budget committee?
I think that's going to be in September, it'll be on the September agenda. At least you'll, you'll get all the applications and anything if that's a board, if that's a Jonathan decides on.
Because we got to get, we have to take care of the budget committee interviews too.
Yeah, and that can also be put off, because budget committee doesn't go, it's not until April, so.
I think last year we didn't do it until September, October, or October.
The board decided to put it off September, October because of feeling Jonathan's.
Jonathan, right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we put it off till October.
So it's good to have a target on that, but that's something that can be.
That we can put that aside, yeah.
You don't hold your meetings until the spring anyway.
Yeah.
And there's online budget committee training in our webinar室.
There is.
All right, I will come back on September 30th, I will finish up from here what we missed. We'll talk about expanded information on public records, protocols, we'll hammer out the agreement, talk about supervaluations.
And protocols include the Parli Pro, are we going to?
Oh, yeah, you want Parli Pro too, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's something that I've been hammering on for a while, but I don't know how everybody else feels. Because we don't generally use parliamentary procedure. So we're kind of at ground zero.
Okay.
And, you know.
Yeah, because I, did you see the email stuff from Tom?
That was good.
Bless his heart, bless his heart, he emailed me directly, so I was wrong and everything, I'm sorry.
He's, he's extremely humble though, we appreciate that.
He was, I know, bless his heart.
So you said Parli Pro, superintendent about expanded public records and.
The agreements, the.
Superintendent Board.
Yeah, agreements, finish up what we didn't finish up. Have the individual board members. So much to talk about, I like your idea of every three months, but I don't know if this year with a superintendent searches can be really practical for you guys. But it is something to consider, once you have a permanent superintendent in place and can, things can settle down for you in that respect. That was why I reached out, I'm like, these guys are probably getting meeting fatigue, I'd be getting meeting fatigue if it were me.
It's been, it's been intense.
Yeah.
All right, are there any opposition to adjourning now?
Seeing none, I adjour with me.
Very good.
Thank you.